Good evening. This September 28, 2017, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Glasgow Middle School Chamber Orchestra under the direction of Steve Shook. Thank you, Glasgow Middle Schools. That was beautiful. Thank you, parents, for bringing your wonderful students for us tonight. And Dr. Braybrand is our principal here tonight?
Yes, Principal Sean DeRose was here.
Great. Thank you, Ms. DeRose.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Glasgow students, for a wonderful rendition of the National Anthem.
Well done. Thank you very much. The board held a closed meeting earlier this evening and certified compliance immediately upon reconvening in public at the forum work session which preceded tonight's regular meeting. And students, you may be dismissed. Thank you. Announcements. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda, and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. I will now call on Ms. Fedekanda for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, October is Bullying Prevention Month, which we'll be celebrating in the coming month. And in an effort to promote awareness of school bullying, the Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors has designated the month of October as VHSBA Bullying Prevention Month. Childhood bullying is a significant problem nationwide. It can cause school absenteeism, mental and physical stress, poor school performance, poor self-esteem, and in some cases, school violence. Statistics show that 160,000 students in the United States miss school each day as a result of being bullied. School Board members, superintendents, teachers, and parents play a critical role in creating a climate where bullying is not tolerated. It has been proven when adults and children stand together, bullying ends. From October 8th to 2017, we're also celebrating Fire Prevention Week, which focuses on the fact that in a fire, seconds count. The official theme, "Every Second Counts, Planned Two Ways Out," reinforces why everyone needs to have an escape plan. Seconds can mean the difference between residents of our community escaping safely from a fire or having their lives end in tragedy. During Fire Prevention Week, fire safety educators around the country will work with citizens to teach them about fire safety tips, encourage them to draw a map of their home marking two exits from each room and a path to the outside from each exit, practice a home fire drill twice a year, regularly test their smoke alarms, and provide activities featuring Sparky the Fire Dog. In addition, I would like to recognize all the Boy Scouts in the audience who are currently working on earning their citizenship badge from Troop 20 and 1523. Can you all stand to be recognized? Thank you. I'll pass it back to Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Fedekanda. This evening, we will recognize the accomplishments of eight student teams and celebrate the 50th anniversary of Holmes Middle School. We will read all nine recognitions, and then the board will take their place in front of the dais, and the clerk will invite each team forward to join the board at the dais for a photo one at a time. As we read the recognition, we would like those students who are being recognized to at least to stand at your place, and then you may take your seat again. So, we'll do that individually, and then at the end, the clerk will call up the groups one at a time for an individual picture. So, we all have that. It'll be dramatic and very theatrical. First, a recognition of Oakton High School winner of the 2016-17 Wells Fargo Cup for Athletics. I will call on Ms. Palczak.
Yes, it is my great privilege to congratulate the Oakton High School athletic team.
And would Oakton High School people please stand so we can see where you are? That's it. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Palczak.
So, it is my great privilege to congratulate Oakton High School's athletes, whose skills and talents earned their school the Wells Fargo Cup Athletic Award for the third time in five years. First awarded in 1990, the Wells Fargo Cup represents excellence and is designed to recognize a state champion, state champion. Wells Fargo Cup winners are determined by a point system based on their team's performance in the VHSL's 27 state tournaments. The cup is presented to the school and each VHSL group classification that has achieved the best overall record in the state-level sports competitions. Points are awarded for all sanctioned sports and include a sportsmanship category. Please join me in congratulating Oakton High School students, coaches, and administration for their continued excellence and outstanding achievement in winning this award.
Thank you. Next, we will recognize Chantilly High School, the VHSL State Championship Wells Fargo Cup for academics. And would the Chantilly folks please stand so that we can see where you are? Great. Thank you. And Mr. McAfee will read the recognition.
So, I'm very proud to read this recognition honoring my good friends at Chantilly High School, many of whom are here tonight. Glad to see such a good turnout. "The Wells Fargo Cup goes to the school in each group classification that has achieved the best overall record in VHL state-level competition in 27 sports and 12 academic activities. The state champion, state champion. Winners are determined by a point system based on performance in VHSL state competitions. Schools can earn academic activity points for outstanding participation in scholastic bowl, creative writing, theater, forensics, debate, newspaper, yearbook, and magazine. Please join me in congratulating Chantilly High School for their accomplishments this year."
Thank you, Chantilly. Now, we have Marshall High School Life Smarts team with the folks from Marshall. Please stand. Great. Thank you. And Ms. Palczak will read this recognition.
So, this is the first of two recognitions for Marshall High School. I know many of the students have graduated, but we're very glad to see the representation here tonight. Tonight, we're very proud to recognize the student team from Marshall High School that participated in the 23rd Annual National Life Smarts Championship in late April in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. The team, which was comprised of five seniors and coached by Rebecca Glassbrenner, who also brought this to our attention, so we thank her, won second place in the four-day competition after having waged an extremely tough battle against two-time national champions from Dallas High School in Dallas, Pennsylvania. Two students from the Marshall team then went on to compete in Life Smarts at the FBLA National Leadership Conference the weekend of July 1st and placed first in the nation. Life Smarts is an education and scholarship program run by the Washington, D.C.-based National Consumers League, the nation's oldest consumer advocacy organization. It competitively tests high school students' knowledge of consumer awareness with subjects including personal finance, health and safety, consumer rights and responsibilities, technology, and the environment. The program began in 1994, and FCPS has been involved since 2007. So, if you could please join me in a round of applause, we have the principal and the director of Marshall Academy here tonight. Thank you very much.
And we have another recognition for Marshall High School girls tennis team. So, if we have members representing the tennis team, would you please stand? And I will call on Ms. Palczak to read this recognition.
So, George C. Marshall High School's girls varsity tennis team won the state championship over undefeated and reigning state champion Deep Run High School. This was the first tennis team championship for Marshall High School and only the fifth state team championship in the school's 50-plus history. Under the guidance of first-year head coach Arlene Fitzpatrick, the team completed an undefeated season, winning the Conference 13 Championship. Incredible. Their dominance continued throughout the regional and state semifinal matches without a single loss. Entering the state championship, the team faced undefeated Deep Run High School, the reigning state champion. After an epic six-hour battle, Marshall's team defeated Deep Run 5 to 3 to complete a perfect season. The team and their coach had a special relationship and bond that strengthened throughout the season. While the team battled tough opponents, their new coach battled through cancer treatments and the loss of her home to a fire. The challenges only made them stronger, and together they prevailed in completing an 18-0 season with 13 shutouts. Their inspirational story was covered in the Washington Post this past spring. If you could please thank me, join me in congratulating the team, their coach, and the administration for this outstanding accomplishment.
Thank you, Marshall High School girls tennis team. Now, we would like to recognize Oakton High School girls tennis team. Would our Oakton students please stand? And I will call on Mr. Wilson to read the recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to read this recognition. Congratulations to the Oakton girls tennis team for their success in winning their conference, region, and Virginia 6A state championship. The Oakton girls tennis team went undefeated in the Concord Conference in the regular season with a 10-0 record. Of the 88 matches that the girls played this season, they won an astounding 85 matches, a win rate of 98 percent. The girls went on to win the quarterfinal regionals and the semifinals to move on to the finals. The key to the regional finals win and a highlight of their season was when Oakton's number-one doubles team defeated the state regional doubles winners, which meant Oakton won 5 to 4 for the Virginia 6A regional title. Oakton went on to win the state title and to have an overall season record of 15-0. Most of the top six players were named all-conference and all-region first or second or honorable mention. Would the members of the Oakton High School girls team please stay standing here. We recognize them.
Congratulations, Oakton. And now, we will recognize Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology Boys Tennis Team, and I will call on Ms. Evans for recognition. And would the TJ people please stand?
Thank you. I'm honored to recognize the Thomas Jefferson Boys Tennis Team. The Fairfax County School Board would like to congratulate the outstanding accomplishments of the Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology Boys Varsity Tennis Team. For the fifth consecutive year, the boys varsity team won the VHSL 5A state championship. Heading into the 2017 season, the team knew it would be a rebuilding year, having graduated five of their top six players, and bidding farewell to Coach John Myers as he retired. But when early injuries sidelined two strong players, the prospect of another championship dimmed. Undaunted, the team stepped up and relied on all 20 players to dominate conference play, losing only one match. In both the regional and state finals, TJ competed against strong contender Stonebridge High School from Newport News. Although Stonebridge switched their lineup to try to gain a tactical advantage, the Colonials prevailed in a 5 to 2 win to take the title. We'd like to congratulate TJ's Colonial coaches, Jay Whitcliff, Rick Wittenberger, Adam Wong, and the Colonial Boys Varsity Tennis Team for their victory. My fellow board members and I wish all of you the best in your future athletic and academic endeavors.
Congratulations, Thomas Jefferson. Now, we would like to recognize the Woodson High School Boys Lacrosse Team, and I call on Ms. McLaughlin to read the recognition.
I first would like to ask that Coach Ryan Hilliard and the wonderful player and supportive administrative staff to be recognized this evening. And this is particularly special for me because my brother-in-law played on the 1988 to 92 men's lacrosse team at Woodson, and then my two older sons played for Coach Hilliard on the Woodson Lacrosse. So, this is very special. On behalf of the Fairfax County School Board, it gives me great pleasure to congratulate the outstanding accomplishments of the WT Woodson High School Boys Varsity Lacrosse Team. After 17 years, the Woodson Cavaliers persevered in the state finals with an exciting 11 to 9 victory over the South County Stallions, thus becoming the Spring 2017 VHSL 6A Boys Championship Team. The Woodson Boys finished with a stellar season of 18 wins and six losses, along with winning both the conference and the state championship games. We congratulate varsity head coach Ryan Hilliard, your assistant coaches Bill McCullough, Brandon Bazan, Pete Smith, Calvin Campbell, Sean Cabarani, and the entire Boys Varsity Lacrosse Team. Wish you all the very best in your upcoming Spring 2018 season.
Congratulations, Woodson. Now, we would like to recognize the Robinson Secondary Girls Lacrosse. And if you all would stand up, and I will call on Ms. McLaughlin for another recognition.
On behalf of the Fairfax County School Board, it gives me great pleasure to honor all of you here this evening for your Spring 2017 VHSL 6A Girls State Lacrosse Championship Team. You Lady Rams rock. After overcoming several losses early in the 2017 season, you persevered and won your third straight VHSL state championship title, in addition to winning the districts. The state final was a very close game, where both teams stayed within a goal of each other. But you Lady Rams, you rallied back on that hot sunny day, and you won 16 to 13 against the Centerville Wildcats. I want to give my warmest congratulations to Coach Liz Case, assistant coach Gary Morgan, and to the Robinson Lady Rams Varsity Lacrosse Team on your remarkable and well-deserved, and quite frankly, unbelievably amazing achievement. I wish you all the best in your upcoming Spring 2018 season. Well done, ladies.
Congratulations, Robinson. Now, we would like to recognize Holmes Middle School. They are celebrating their 50th anniversary, and I will call on Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's really a pleasure to offer this resolution to honor Holmes Middle School's 50th anniversary. Whereas Oliver Wendell Holmes Middle School proudly celebrates the 50th anniversary of its founding and its reputation for providing Mason and Braddock District students with an excellent academic foundation so they may embark on their futures fully prepared with the critical thinking skills, global and environmental awareness, ethics, sense of citizenship, and resilience as described in our portrait of a graduate. And whereas, Holmes Middle School, as one of only three Fairfax County middle schools, which include grades 6, 7, and 8, develops school goals and policy in collaboration with a 35-member teacher instructional leadership team committed to the development of consistent school-wide policies to ensure a safe learning environment for every student. And whereas, Holmes Middle School welcomes, honors, and respects diversity of all kinds, as exemplified by its students and staff members representing more than 50 of the world's countries, and embraces the school's diversity as a unique opportunity and strength that enriches and broadens the educational experiences of all students and prepares them to be 21st-century learners. And whereas, Holmes Middle School teachers collaborate to coordinate instruction that meets each student's individual needs and enriches students through its international baccalaureate middle-years program, special education services, young scholars, and advancement via individual determination to prepare all students for college readiness. And whereas, thousands of students have passed through Holmes Middle School's doors and benefited from a comprehensive education and a smooth transition to high school as a result of the efforts of dedicated teachers and staff in a nurturing and positive environment, with the support of school leaders and collaboration with the Parent Teacher Association, whose positive outreach has developed a strong cadre of parent and community volunteers. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board honors Holmes Middle School on the occasion of its 50th anniversary and commends its history of providing educational excellence and enrichment opportunities to the students and community, I so move.
And is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Palczak. Is there any other discussion? Would you like to add more remarks?
I would just like to say I'm just so honored to be offering this resolution and welcome the Holmes Middle School family here, and particularly Principal Margaret Barnes, who's done an amazing job. So, and I see PTA President Julie Stranley and members of the community. So, thank you all for joining us tonight, and I look forward to celebrating the 50th anniversary at your event on Saturday, October 21st, to which the community is invited and welcome.
Thank you. All those in favor of this wonderful resolution, wishing them a happy 50th birthday. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, I would like to invite my colleagues to come to the dais, and then Ms. Malberg will call groups down one at a time for a photograph. Thank you. Will the Oakton High School Wells Fargo Cup athletic champions please join the board at the dais for a photo? Would the Marshall High School Life Smarts Team, please come to the front? The Marshall High School Life Smarts Team, please come to the front for a photo. The Marshall High School Girls Tennis Team, please come to the front for a photo. The Oakton High School Girls Tennis Team, please come to the front for the photo. The Oakton High School Girls Tennis Team, we already got them? Okay. The TJ High School Boys Tennis Team, please. Woodson High School Boys Lacrosse Team, the Woodson High School Boys Lacrosse Team, Robinson Secondary School Girls Lacrosse, Robinson Girls Lacrosse, please come to Our final recognition, the Holmes Middle School 50th Anniversary. The next order of business is citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information and connected with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with a decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching at home, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come to speak to us tonight. Tonight, 10 citizens have signed up to address the board, and we also have five video testimonies. The first, I will announce the first three speakers. The first is Alicia Gandell, the second is George Waters, and then Karen Walter. Ms. Alicia Gandell?
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Alicia Gandell, and I'm a junior at Jeb Stewart High School.
And I'm Marla Hilary, also attending Jeb Stewart High School.
A few short months ago, you voted to change the name of Jeb Stewart High School to something that quote "better reflects Fairfax County values and diversity." The name Stewart High School does not. After speaking with some students about this issue, regardless of their stance about the name change, whether they were for or against it, the majority believed that the name Stewart High School is not a change. In addition, Stewart no way reflects FCPS values and diversity. It is either still named after the Confederate war general that the community pushed so hard to not glorify, or it is a faceless name. It is pointless, because how does a name that has no attachment to anyone reflect the diversity of FCPS? That being said, Stewart, it does have an attachment to a person, Jeb Stewart, and changing it does nothing to erase, does nothing to take away from the meaning of Jeb Stewart High School. Many of those who voted for Jeb Stewart High School did so simply because it couldn't be named Jeb Stewart. And while I have the utmost respect for the democratic ways that this process is being carried out, it is failing. There are so many names of individuals that better reflect FCPS values and diversity. Barbara Rose Johns, Thurgood Marshall, and Colonel Luis Mendez. All of these people are much better suited to name a school after than a name, depending on your perspective, is either faceless or still Jeb Stewart. In addition, these three names got more votes, these three names combined got more votes than the name Stewart. And you, the school board, and we, the community, have spent more than two years on this issue. It would be pointless and a waste of time and effort from everyone involved if the name was changed to Stewart. People have dedicated countless hours to this issue, and these would all go down the drain if the name was changed to Stewart. Another consideration is that Stewart mechanically is still a new name. It's a different name. So, the expenses that would incur with a genuinely different name would still happen with Stewart, all for the removal of just three letters. Spending this large amount of money on the removal of three letters accomplishes nothing. It is wasting money on a change that is not a change, and the funds being used should be put toward a name better suited for the community. Thank you for your time.
I would like to second Alicia's remarks by emphasizing that Stewart is not a name change. It does nothing to represent diversity of FCPS, which is especially important to me as a person of color that attends at FCPS school. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is George Waters, to be followed by Karen Walter.
I am George Waters, parent of a Stewart graduate. My wife Cindy sends her best. I'm going to allow Colonel Mendez's family the time remaining after I speak. On July 27th, you did a great thing by voting to change the name of Stewart High School. In doing so, I think you realize the absurdity of the argument suggesting that A, the Civil War was not about slavery, or that B, Fairfax County was a shining beacon of racial harmony in the 1950s. The Confederate flag that Jeb Stewart carried in our school for over two decades after it opened and still carries today, simply colored all in blue, is ample evidence of that. Relative to the new name, we understand the issues involving race and civil rights are complex. It will take some courage to do the right thing, as did Governor Nikki Haley when she acted to remove the Confederate flag from the Capitol grounds in South Carolina. During my daughter's four years at Stewart, I never heard her refer to the school by anything other than the name Stewart High School. Her report card came from Stewart, correspondence to and from the school referenced it as Stewart, as do public maps. It puzzles me that two years of study by this board would seriously consider simply deleting Jeb and calling it still Stewart High School. This is not a change. It is not consistent with your own motion that the new name not be connected to the Confederacy. Who will the Stewart be? The ballot item read, quote, "Stewart Raiders," end quote, and that is an unequivocal association with a Confederacy. Consider the message this would send across the country and across the county. The literature we handed out during the survey vote was inclusive and asked folks to vote for Johns, Marshall, and Mendez, and the votes reflected enthusiasm for them. The vote was not a plebiscite, and it was our thinking that Dr. Brayban would be forwarding multiple names to you. In fact, he has. The fact that not a single high school in Fairfax County is named after a woman or a person of color is troubling. Please support the names of our heroes of civil rights movement. My preference is for Barbara Johns, who had the courage to protest school desegregation at the age of 16 in 1951, so that she and her classmates could get an equal education. That is the type of person we should name schools after, and that is the type of person that I and others will gladly help raise funds for. The superintendent's recommendation to the school board includes a cost estimate that far exceeds the $154,000 to $176,000 infrastructure cost. The excess is undefined operating costs that are not new but are existing and regular expenses. Thank you.
We are Tina Mendez Morgan and Louis Mendez III, two children of Louis Mendez Jr., one of the three specific personal names chosen by Dr. Brauerbrand for the school board's consideration.
We also believe that Stewart is not a name change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Karen Walter, to be followed by Fred Costello.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on the agenda topic Jeb Stuart name, Jeb Stuart renaming. My name is Kate Walter. Both of my children were pupil placed at Jeb Stuart High School for the IB program. And when my son graduated last June, we joined the ranks of Fairfax County taxpayers who no longer have children in the system. On July 27th, 2017, this board voted to change the name of Jeb Stuart High School. Despite repeated demonstrations of community support for keeping the name, it was ruled offensive and necessary to change. At the same time, board members agreed that Stuart was a unique name, and in passing the name change motion specifically urged the public to consider the Stuart option. The board directed Dr. Braybrand to initiate a public process to gather and evaluate potential names. The specifics of this process are outlined in Regulation 8170.7. The name Stuart was submitted and included as an available name choice. To determine now, after a vote has been taken, that Stuart is not a unique name, would basically disenfranchise every individual who voted, who selected that option. The polling method defined in the reg is a variation of a modified board account. It is broadly accepted within decision-making theory that no one political, no one polling approach satisfies all criteria of fairness. Therefore, the selection of a polling method in itself highlights the underlying value to be reflected, and this method addresses consensus. Individuals may have behaved differently with only one choice, but that is not the process that this board selected. In addition to defining the polling approach, the regulation underscores results cannot be combined after a poll is taken. The main reason that this is prohibited is that combining results potentially allows one participant greater say in the process than another by counting the weighted value of two choices for some participants against the weighted value of one choice for other participants. Based on the prescribed polling method, the community selected Stuart. The name Stuart does represent an honorable Virginia family, which has contributed from pre-revolutionary times through today, including a respected family in our own community with students at the school. It bridges the past and future of nearly sixty, sixty years of school legacy and common identity. It is the least costly method of change. Some are concerned that Stuart does not stand for anything specific. I suggest we allow the students to define themselves now and in the future. FCPS is pouring a good deal of resources into the positivity project. This program teaches students about 24 different character traits, helps them identify their own strengths and weaknesses, and empowers them to build an intrinsic identity rather than allowing others to project a definition upon them. Already you see this movement is underway at the school, with the number of students adopting the hashtag #NewStu motto. If the board still feels it cannot make a decision to support the name Stuart, at a minimum, it owes the student body a full, direct, and binding poll held at the school during class hours to maximize the opportunity for all students who want to participate safely. Students do not universally feel safe expressing their views openly on this issue. Allowing closed vote will allow them to express themselves once and for all.
Thank you. The next speaker is Fred Costello, to be followed by Robert Rigby.
Well, we're in for a change of pace. You treat suicide as if it's a mental illness only, okay? Sometimes it's a choice, as in assisted suicide. People choose death over life. Your FLE program adds to the problem. In April, I asked you to revise the FLE program so it was not a course in pregnancy-free sex at any age, but truly family life education, teaching marriage, not sex. Teach the students how to stay married and be good parents. I know a woman, she married one of your public school products and divorced after one year. Her ex-husband thought marriage was totally about sex, exactly what your FLE program implies, because it doesn't talk about marriage. He is now self-destructing. Their son is one of your problems, children in school. In April, I suggested you get the divorce rate down from 50% to the national, national average, to a 1% average of several large segments in our society. It can be done. Thanks to the marriage courses that my wife and I took in high school, we've been married for 58 years. Much data shows that children from stable marriages are happier and perform better in school and in society. Your teachers will be delighted to have such students. Since April, I was shocked to learn that your FLE, FLE program does not cover the psychology of sex. Your program teaches mating. For human beings, sexual intercourse is not simply mating. Your FLE program doesn't even link sexual intercourse with love and commitment. Statistics imply actually that only one of you, board members, experienced the beauty and joy of being a virgin who married a virgin. Don't deprive your hundreds of thousands of students of this beauty and joy. Don't treat them as trainable beasts, but as educatable human beings. Teach them the psychology of sex, okay, as experienced by families that have a mere 1% divorce rate. Teach them how to have happy marriages and a properly focused sex life. Don't leave 50% of your 184,000 students into extramarital, unfulfilling sex, and dismal marriages. Don't foster suicide. If you do, as I warned you before, you'll be responsible and guilty. You'll ultimately pay the consequences, perhaps on your deathbed, as you reflect back on your life or thereafter. Teach the psychology of sex. Teach marriage, not sex. Thank you.
The next speaker is Robert Rigby, to be followed by John Delong.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Braybrand and staff. My name is Robert Rigby, and I am an 18-year veteran teacher in FCPS. Among other things, I have many conversations with transgender teens, parents of transgender students, and teachers of transgender students of all ages. If you have had the opportunity to read it, you have seen the list of some 25 occasions in the past eight months in which I have heard about barriers to full acceptance for these students. You know that I am urging further action. Yet I would be remiss if I did not declare loudly how far Fairfax County Public Schools has already come, and to thank you for what you have done so far. I received a note from a parent of a 10-year-old boy on Tuesday, asking if I knew anywhere that she could nominate the principal and staff of her son's school for their amazing support for her trans child during his transition. This was a parent expecting barriers, who instead found unquestioning support and good guidance. The note renewed my faith in FCPS, the goodwill of our staff, and the idea that we are moving in the right direction. That said, I think we still lack clarity and have a spotty, catch-as-you-can system. My fear is that we create a dual system in which parents with the resources and information to be persistent, who are, or who are lucky in encountering well-informed staff, receive terrific support for their children. Parents who are not so well situated, or children whose parents are not avid activists, have to make do with what they can get. In other words, we create a dual, separate, but not equal system. This is unfair and untenable. We must have clear, explicit regulations. I know that we are under the gun from the Family Research Council, Liberty Council, the Family Foundation, and Concerned Parents. Eighteen years ago, I was, it was Concerned Women for America, Parents and Friends of Ex-Gays, and Parents Against Bad Books in schools. Montgomery County Public Schools fought the same actors, Liberty Council and FRC, 10 years ago, and won. Now they have a model policy for transgender kids. The need is clear, and the support at the ballot box is also clear after Ms. Kees-Gamar's landslide election. Please consider enacting conference and regulations about supporting social transition in our schools. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Delong, to be followed by Raymond Fry.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is John Delong. A survey from February reports that only 35% of parents and students believe FCPS is financially responsible. Only 67% of administrators are reported to believe the same. I read the 89 pages of the resource stewardship narrative that you're going to review later tonight, and 28 pages of presentation, a bit ironic that this much paper is devoted to resource stewardship. Strategy 10 addresses transparency, accountability, and benchmarking, important elements, of course, of your stewardship responsibilities. I have been at the forefront of calling for a reduction of ERFC's management fee expenses. Currently, ERFC exceeds its peer group average and is way out of line with best-in-class peers. Consider combining ERFC fund management with the county plans to lower costs this year. A more significant issue is the design of ERFC benefits, and a small positive start was achieved last year. But the unusual 3% COLA remains for most and has exceeded actual inflation by almost double over the past 10 years. This grants real raises to retired teachers at the expense of current teachers. This is inappropriate, inequitable, and ultimately unsustainable. Adjusting to CPI for all beneficiaries is important. The growth of the unfunded liability in ERFC to more than $750 million as of year-end is a hidden tax on Fairfax residents. The expectation is that more than 7% of FCPS payroll expenditures will be allocated to funding these supplemental retirement benefits, diverting funds from classroom initiatives. Strategy number 11 includes a metric of cost per pupil. Two years ago at this dais, I highlighted trends in special education spending and questioned if such differences were equitable to other students. I've attached a chart, benchmarking special ed services in FCPS versus regional peers, and the differences are eye-opening. The last substantive, substantive review of special ed was the Gibson Report done in 2003, 15 years ago. It's time to reassess these programs. My last issue is contracting. We still don't have a comprehensive database of FCPS contracts, and sole-source contracts are a particular concern. The 2015 contract internal audit findings have not yet been fully implemented, two years later. Evaluation and oversight metrics are insufficient. The example of the non-compete Batel for Kids contract extension of $363,000, just 10 weeks prior to the resignation announcement of the previous superintendent to assume leadership of BFK, is glaring. There are other examples, and these indicate serious problems that must be addressed to protect FCPS resources and reputation. I strongly support the efforts to bring analytical rigor to the evaluation of programs. We have ORC, and the Office of Auditor General, both should be given broad latitude and resources to challenge and evaluate programs and practices, and promote transparency, accountability, and benchmarking. The community will recognize and reward effective management, responsible leadership, and efficient use of resources. I wish you success. And by the way, I caution you against reliance on statistically insignificant surveys. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Raymond Fry, to be followed by Teresa Shipe.
Thank you very much, Chairman Strauss. My name is Raymond Friday. And high schools are the keystone to every community. I'm one of seven Fridays that attended Stuart High School over a five-decade period. I've lived in Stuart Pyramid for 54 of my 61 years of life, and Stuart was my launching pad to life. Stuart has always been the name of the school, and it's been recognized for years as Stuart High School, as evidence of this 1974 articles in the newspaper. So Stuart has been around for 58 years as a school, as our, I guess, keystone to our community. I went to Stuart last Friday night and spoke to some teachers that I know, and you have a workforce and student body that's stressed out. And they want to get this behind them. They want to start teaching, they want to start concentrating on their studies to get back to a normal school day. And actually, I found students that were excited about the prospect of Stuart as being the name, and had come up with the hashtag #NewStu. Stuart has already been sanitized. The name Jeb only exists on the entry sign, the scoreboard, the front of the school, and three vinyl letters on the marching band trailer. Nothing on the uniforms other than Stuart. Do you know that, what the school colors of Jeb Stuart High School are? They're red, white, and blue. Same thing as that United States flag, and it always has been. The naming process, let's talk about that. The first session was open to anyone, so we had name after name added to the list for many people who didn't even live in our pyramid. That was just plain wrong to set it up that way. Second, the vote was pluralistic, designed to put the incumbent name Stuart at a disadvantage. Last, the turnout. Ms. Schultz, you have an email that pointed out that only 93, that 93% of the houses did not vote, and rightfully, many of these people are supporters of Stuart. And if you were to take the statistical area and go out, you would find that Stuart would overwhelmingly win that at the end of the day. At the end of the day, the deck was stacked against Stuart, and yet it still was a winner. Stuart was Ms. Evans' recommendation to heal the community, maintain continuity, keep the legacy alumni intact, and I have 11 pages of quotes from all of you of varying degrees of support for the name of Stuart. As a board, you have better things to occupy your time, like educating our kids and supporting our valued teachers. Above all else, be fiscally responsible. To remove Jeb will save 300K by your estimates, will remove the Confederacy linkage, can be named after a Stuart family as McLean is. And then if you can't do this or won't do this, drive it back to the students. Let them take the final vote. After all, this all started with the students, so we could let them end it and stop this time and energy spent on this agenda. Again, the keystone to our community is Stuart High School. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Teresa Shipe, to be followed by Catherine Stewart.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Shipe, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I am here representing the group More Recession for Fairfax County. Our group believes that more recess is essential for our elementary school students. One of your action items tonight is the strategic plan Ignite, goal number four, which is resource stewardship. This is defined as a commitment to champion the needs of our community, communities, and be responsible stewards of the public investment. I believe increased recess times is a current need of our school communities, and the best part is, it doesn't cost any extra money. Increased recess times have been shown to help students improve focus, get exercise, improve social skills, improve problem-solving skills, and process what they learn in the classroom. Recession is crucial to a well-rounded education. When I was an elementary school student, I had three recesses a day for about 45 minutes total, and I attended multiple school districts. Now, my second grader only receives one 20-minute recess, as long as we have a full day and the weather is, you know, about perfect. Our group More Recession for Fairfax County created an online survey to get feedback from our community. Our initial goal was to get 100 to 200 responses from our local community in the Braddock District. We quickly found out that parents were a lot more passionate about recess than we thought. Just through Facebook, in two weeks, we received over 7,000 responses from our survey. Residents, of those residents, 2/3 had current elementary school students. Also, thanks to social media, our survey spread across 140 of our elementary schools. There's about 143, give or take. So what did we learn from our survey? Well, 50, or I mean, 95% of parents want more recess for their elementary school students, and 99% believe that recess is important to their child's academic success. More specifically, parents who answered our survey want their children to have two 20-minute recesses a day. We also learned that different schools offer different amounts of recess throughout the county. Most of our schools give the current recommendation of 20 minutes per day. 25% give 15 minutes or less, and a few lucky schools get 30 minutes a day. Actually, this year, some even up to 40. We are, we were also disappointed to learn that over half of our survey respondents have students who have lost recess for disciplinary reasons, even though the state regulation requires daily recess, and Fairfax County's health and wellness policy advises against it. In conclusion, our community believes that two recesses a day is essential for providing our elementary school students with a well-rounded education that will set them up for future success. Therefore, increasing recess times should be part Therefore, increasing recess times should be part of Fairfax County’s strategic plan Ignite. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Catherine Stewart, to be followed by Helen Lee.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Stewart. I have a second grader at Cubrun Elementary School and a four-year-old and two-year-old at home. Later this evening, you will be voting on a new suicide prevention policy. As another member of the group More Recession for Fairfax County, I would like to talk to you about how adding more recess will assist with suicide prevention. As you probably know, there is an epidemic of childhood anxiety and depression in this country, and both steadily rising in teens and young adults since 1950. In fact, suicide rates from 1950 to 2005 quadrupled for children under 15 and doubled for teens and young adults 15 to 25. Did you know that during this same period, we have drastically decreased unstructured playtime for our children? Researchers like Dr. Peter Gray, a professor of psychology at Boston College, believe that this decline in free play is actually causing our increase in childhood mental disorders. The policy you are voting on today is a good start, but suicide prevention is not about... I’m sorry. But suicide prevention is about more than catching someone before they pull the trigger. We have to intervene long before that. We want to raise children who are happy and who enjoy being alive. And for this, they need unstructured playtime outside. Free play and exploration are the means by which children learn to solve their own problems, control their own lives, and develop their own interests. Conversely, anxiety and depression often occur when children feel like they cannot solve their own problems, like they lack control over their own lives and can’t figure out a direction, calling or purpose for themselves. When we give our students only 15 to 20 minutes of recess per day, we are depriving them of much-needed unstructured playtime and thus are harming their mental health. Beyond unstructured playtime, there is another benefit of recess for mental health and suicide prevention. Recession gets kids outside. A review of research in the Journal of Extreme Physiology and Medicine in 2013 found that exercising outdoors can improve self-esteem, reduce feelings of depression, anger, and tension. Also, some studies have shown a link between vitamin D deficiency and depression. We get vitamin D primarily from sunlight, and most Americans don’t get enough of it. For many children in our schools, recess is their only chance to be outside and soak up vitamin D on weekdays. After school, these students get sent to after-school childcare or structured activities, or they go home to an empty house and do their homework. Fairfax County has this phenomenal opportunity to serve our students by sending them outside to play at recess, even in cold weather. So in closing, because of all the research showing the benefits of recess to mental health, we and More Recession for Fairfax County believe that all elementary school students should get at least 40 minutes of recess per day, separated into at least two segments, and held outside whenever possible. Students should have the vital unstructured playtime that recess provides every day, even on short-scheduled days. And students should not have recess taken away as a punishment. We look forward to working with you to improve recess policy in Fairfax County schools. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Helen Lee. The next speaker is Helen Lee. Ms. Lee?
Hi. So I’m a TJ alumni, but playing away games at Stewart was never pleasant. Along with other SCPS alumni from William &amp; Mary and TJ, I am astonished that Stewart is even being considered right now. And stand if you agree. It is not a change. It is a betrayal to honor the Stewart family or pro-Confederate white folks over affected people of color, especially African-Americans all over Fairfax County. This summer, the school board voted to teach the history of our school names, but our high schools are only named after white men. For most SCPS students, this means that they will only learn the histories of white men. You can finally name one high school after a woman of color and acknowledge our history. Stewart, or a neutral choice like Peace Valley High, sends the message that our continued existence is unworthy of honor and too political to be welcomed in Fairfax County. I give the rest of my time to Edwina Jackson and Ken Longmire.
Good evening. I’m Edwina Jackson. I graduated from Stewart a long time ago, I’ll say that. Going to a school named after Confederate general was, at times, once we learned who he was, was very uncomfortable and awkward at times, to say the least. So how could the school board members now decide to keep the name Stewart after the majority of you voted to change it? Imagine the headlines. After two-year delay, the school board drops Jeb, keeps Stewart, and we called it Stewart anyway. How... Okay, so many of the students and alumni, parents, and others think that the new name of our high school should be Barbara Rose Johns High School. Barbara Rose Johns was a high school student who played an original and essential role in ending segregated schools in America, including Stewart. The girl who sparked Brown v. Board has been called Virginia’s Rosa Parks, a young woman of African ancestry and a Virginian. Now, Ken?
Mr. Strauss, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I’m Ken Longmire. I’ve lived in the Stewart Pyramid only 45 years. My daughters went to Stewart and to Glasgow, and one of the pleasures of being here is to hear the Glasgow Orchestra, which my daughter played in, under that excellent direction of Mr. Shook. So it was great. I came here really to talk about Barbara Rose Johns, but I think that’s been done already. Again, she was a high school student who played an original and essential role in ending segregated schools in America, and that includes at Stewart High School. She was the girl, in the words of Bill Moyers, “The girl who sparked Brown v. Board.” She has been called Virginia Rosa Parks. And it’s all right to name a school after a person. Persons need not be divisive. We have eight high schools in Fairfax County named after a person, and they’re all boys. It’s time to name a school after a girl. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have five video presentations. If we are ready to show them. The first is presented by John Allen. We will take a moment for this to be loaded.
Hi. My name is John Allen. I’d like to talk to you today about Jeb Stewart High School name change. The superintendent recommended five names to the school board, one of which includes Stewart and Stewart Raiders. Even though the board proposal suggested that we consider Stewart, it is an outcome that I find totally unacceptable. It is not a real change in the school image. I would like the board to consider the real ramifications of going with Stewart High School in the context of giving the school a new name. There are some facts. Firstly, Stewart High School was not a new name. Stewart High School is, in fact, the current name of the school. The official name is Jeb Stewart High School, but the school is commonly called and known as Stewart High School, as these samples will show. The list that follows is not exhaustive. However, one should conclude that just Stewart is not really a naming school. It’s really a very modest modification, not altered the school image. The list includes the following, which I’ll go through in detail. Digital. Sisview. Stewart High School athletics website. Again, athletic website. Yahoo! List of Stewart Parents. Keep in Touch, Stewart High School. Website URL, Stewart High School. School website, Stewart High School and logo. Google Maps, Stewart High School. Notice, Parker College Street, Jeb Stewart Park. Letterhead, return address, Stewart. Report cards, Stewart High School. IB exam schedule, Stewart High School. National Honor Report, again, Stewart High School. Booster’s Bylaws, Stewart High School. Article 1. The name of the organization is Jeb Stewart High School Raiders Booster Club. It’s also known as Stewart, or just High School. Challengers’ uniforms, Stewart. Signs in and outside the school. Parking lot. School interior, both Stewart. Stewart High School is not a new name, is, in effect, the old name, the current name of the school. Many school board members and the community members have stated publicly and privately that no school today would be named after Confederate war general. But if Stewart is chosen, then it will only be interpreted as Jeb Stewart. I can’t see any other way of how this would be viewed by, not only in the community but outside. Stewart High School is just not a change. Stewart High School is the current name of the school. I would endeavor the school board to choose a different name than Stewart. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. And just so that you know, we also have monitors that we can see in front of this little wall, so we can either turn around or look here. The next video is presented by Debbie Ratliff.
Good evening. Changing the official school name from Jeb Stewart High School to Stewart High School will effectively remove three letters from the school’s official name, but it will not change who the name honors. Stewart High School is not a change. Stewart High School honors Jeb Stewart and the Confederacy. When we changed this to this and this, it’s still Jeb Stewart, and it’s still the Confederate flag. We still have this. Removing three letters from the name will not remove the name’s connections to Jeb Stewart and the Confederacy. The school is already known as Stewart High School in print and online, and as such, the name Stewart already represents the school’s official namesake, Jeb Stewart. Therefore, if the new official name were Stewart, it would continue to represent the school’s original official namesake, Jeb Stewart and the Confederacy. The Confederate flag has been part of the school’s brand as late as 1989, as these examples show. The gym floor, the wall mural, the letter jacket, the letter jacket close-up, and the football jersey. The image of Jeb Stewart, the cavalry rider, the Raider, has always been in silhouette. Today, the flag is in silhouette, like the rider. It’s still Jeb Stewart, and it’s still the Confederate flag. Removing the colors of the Confederate flag, the stars and bars, didn’t change what the flag represents and its connection to the school’s namesake and the Confederacy. Removing three letters from the school’s official name will also not change the school’s namesake and its connection to the Confederacy either. Community members and school board members have publicly and privately stated that they would not name a school after a Confederate general in the year 2017. If the official name of the school, the Stewart High School or Stewart Raiders, this is what we would effectively be doing. Stewart High School and the Raiders will always be Jeb Stewart High School. Just as a cavalry rider, the Raider has always been Jeb Stewart, and the flag has always been the Confederate flag. Stewart High School is not a change. Stewart Raiders High School is not a change.
The next video is presented by Deborah Holmer.
Agenda topic: Suicide Prevention in the Fairfax County Public Schools. Although rape and sexual assault can happen to anyone, it is a crime dominated by males. 90% of all rapes and sexual assaults in U.S. are to female victims, according to the Rape Abuse and Incest National Network Fact Sheet and its estimates. Male predators exploit their biological advantage in size, strength, and aggression. One in nine girls under the age of 18 are rape and sexual assault survivors. Accordingly, an estimated 10,000 young female girls have experienced rape or sexual assaults among the 90,000 young females enrolled in FCPS. Sadly, many of these young females are at high risk of depression and suicide. 70% of all rape and sexual assault survivors experience moderate to severe distress from their traumatic experience. This translates to an estimated 7,000 young females, girls currently in FCPS that experience painful distress and trauma. Distress and trauma takes the form of anxiety, stress, pain, suffering fear, and panic attacks. Roughly 1 in 3 rape victims contemplate suicide due to trauma and distress from which they are trying to cope and heal. This translates to an estimated 1,000 young female girls in FCPS. Roughly 1 in 8 rape victims is said to actually attempt suicide. This translates to hundreds of actual attempted suicides by young female students. Many female rape and sexual assault survivors live silently in shame. Many suffer from PTSD, depression, poor body image, eating disorders, drug and alcohol abuse, and other problems. Many are afraid no one will believe them. Many are terrified that even if people did know, they would not do anything to help. Many feel powerless to do anything. Why is the school board attempting to aggravate the problems of these thousands of vulnerable young females by forcing males in the bathroom showers and locker rooms without their consent or personal consideration? A female has no idea of the intention of males who walk into these rooms. The fears and anxieties of female rape and sexual assault survivors are rational and base of actual real-life experiences and not hypotheticals. There are logical and rational reasons why bathrooms and locker rooms are segregated by biological sex. In conclusion, help to raise awareness in the schools that thousands of young female rape and sexual assault survivors have special needs. They are not irrelevant. Do not make young females subservient to male-dominated interests, including forcing males into their bathrooms, locker rooms, and showers. Ensure school policies and regulations are written and designed to prevent the harm and exploitation of female students.
The next video is presented by Neil Simpson.
Hi. My name is Neil Simpson, and I’m a senior at Marshall High School. I’ve coordinated with other students from Fairfax County Public Schools to discuss resource stewardship and the natural at resources currently used to generate Fairfax County schools’ electricity. The energy that we currently run on is unsustainable and costs the county more than we realize in the long run. We have come together and devised a solution installing solar panels on FCPS schools. Doing so would offer educational opportunity, provide a hedge against the increase in the cost of electricity, and drastically reduce the county’s carbon footprint, and make us a leader as the world moves further towards clean energy. We understand that Fairfax County Public Schools has a limited budget. We have a proposal that required no actual purchase of solar panels through a financial mechanism known as the Power Purchase Agreement, or the PPA. The PPA allows an entity, such as a school, to have solar panels installed and maintained without having to purchase the actual panels. Rather, the solar company owns and maintains the panels, and the school purchases electricity off of them, just as we do from our utility. But the electricity would be coming from a renewable source, daily sunshine. A PPA is a contract signed by the school system that allows the company to install, maintain, and own the solar panels. For the duration of the contract, the school will purchase electricity from the panels at a competitive price. Because of the set price, there’s protection from a potential increase in price from utility. Schools can potentially save on operating costs as soon as they get started. A PPA also allows the schools to indirectly take part in the federal tax credit for solar energy. Private solar companies can take advantage of the 30% tax credit on solar systems and pass that credit on. Public schools could not utilize the tax credit if they bought the panels themselves. When this contract ends, the schools could buy the panels from the company or enter into another PPA, as the panels are expected to last for 40 years. Now is the best time to take advantage of solar energy, as the price of solar panels has dropped drastically in the last six years. 3,700 kindergarten through 12th grade schools in the U.S. have gone solar, providing energy for almost 4 million students. Additionally, universities like Yale, Princeton, and Northwestern have all begun to move towards solar energy. Kent County Public Schools in Maryland decided to switch to solar in 2012, and they expected to save 3 million in the next 20 years. By recognizing how beneficial solar energy and the PPA has been, Kent County has set a precedent that other schools need to be leaders in the sector. Closer to home, Arlington’s Discovery School has generated as much energy from their solar panels as the school uses, making the school essentially net zero. The FCPS school board and our superintendent are the leaders we need. As one of the most successful school districts in the country, FCPS should be leading the United States to the future. We have gathered over 1,000 signatures proving that other Fairfax students, parents, and taxpayers agree. We are the future.
Thank you. The last video is presented by Catherine Hammond.
Hi, I'm Catherine Hammond, a junior from James Madison High School, here to represent my school in the Solar for Schools Initiative. I'd like to speak on improving resource stewardship by acquiring electricity for our schools from solar panels. The mission statement of Fairfax County Public Schools is to inspire and empower students to meet high academic standards, lead healthy ethical lives, and be responsible and innovative global citizens. Installing solar panels in FCPS buildings will help us achieve that mission in every respect. The solar panels will help inspire and empower students to meet high academic standards. Students can run experiments using acquired data, better understand the way solar panels work, and witness the real-world application of the technology. Last year, physics students in James Madison High School made an analysis, solar cost benefit, in the final project-based learning project. They derived data about the cost of installing solar panels on our homes and schools. Not only is the data intriguing, but student-derived, which is pretty powerful. The solar panels will also help students lead healthy ethical lives. According to the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences, reducing fossil fuel emissions would greatly benefit the health of the community by reducing respiratory diseases, cardiovascular diseases, birth defects, and even death. As to ethics, air pollution not only affects the humans creating it, but also the creatures and environment. Vienna is a green and lush area, and we need to preserve it in all its beauty. Finally, the solar panels will help students become responsible and innovative global citizens. Once kids become exposed to this progressive way of learning, they'll go off into the world and change it for the better. FCPS has already taken great steps towards sustainability. One hundred and forty-six Fairfax County Public Schools earned the Energy School Rating. James Madison, for example, was one of the top three schools to reduce its energy consumption from 2016. It is our first year in the competition and shows our drive to help reduce energy in any way possible. We reduced it by 16.4% compared to the previous year. Specifically, Madison saved 140,000 kilowatts and reduced CO2 emissions by 98.7 metric tons. Madison achieved all this in only three months. Imagine what a year or more would do. Ultimately, it is the students who must take it into their hands to change the world around them. Many environmental clubs would love to have solar panels installed to make their mark on the world and on their community. Every step towards the goal of a healthier planet is worth it and will accumulate into something greater than a single person or a single school. The motto of Madison High School is "One school, one community, one world." I stand by this motto as a warhawk and would want to see it come to life. By caring for one school, the passion spreads to the community and ultimately the world. Please help us make our mark and, as the great Gandhi once said, "Be the change we want to see in the world." Clean energy is the future. We are the future. Put solar on our schools.
Thank you to everybody who came out to speak to us tonight and to those who presented video testimony. The next item on our agenda, 4.02 Student Representative Matters, I call on Ms. Fetaconda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this past Monday, I had the opportunity to meet with the Superintendent Student Advisory Council and it's really a fabulous bunch of students. We're going to be working on mental health, the strategic plan, and the budget this year, which I think is especially unique since we'll finally have a student take on the budget and see what the student perspective is on some of our issues, including AP funding and things like that. And I'm looking forward to continue working with them this year. And regarding Jeb Stewart, which I know is a big issue at this time, I know the current process was primarily about taxpayers and whoever lives in the pyramid. And I really, really would like to see a poll exclusively for students so that we can get a final definition on what the students who are currently at the school really think about the name. I want all the options to be on the table so that students can really tell us what they want from the school. And regarding the increased recess time that I, that was presented, I completely agree with this. I grew up having a morning and lunch recess and now as a high school student who sometimes has to do her homework during lunch, yeah, it's not that fun. But I really appreciate having had that recess time in elementary schools and I urge all my colleagues on the board to support extending recess since, especially if it doesn't cost us anything, I think it's quite a great benefit and looking at what can be done in terms of policy to make this happen. But going off of that, there are a lot of different issues at the elementary and middle school level that aren't represented at the high school, that aren't, that don't exist at the high school level. We don't have recess in high school and as such, I'm not really interacting with a lot of students who are bringing me these issues. So I want to reach out to all elementary and middle school parents and teachers to see how we, I can better represent all of the students in our system, which is part of my job. And finally, October is Bullying Prevention Month. All of us on this board and everyone in every one of our schools are committed to stopping bullying within our school system. But eliminating bullying, even though we have all these resources and policies and people to talk to, starts with each and every one of us just following a rather simple philosophy: being kind. If you see someone being bullied, stand up for them and provide support. It doesn't take a lot of time, it just takes you saying, "Hey, this isn't fair. You shouldn't be doing this. It's not nice." No one deserves to feel unloved or alone just because of who they are or what they look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fetaconda. The next item is Opening of Schools Report and I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for sticking around for the Opening of Schools Report. It's my pleasure this evening to present to you the Opening of School Report. It's an annual event here in Fairfax County and I'm going to give you an overview of several items around demographics, our hiring, our transportation, capital improvement, and lots of other things that I think folks are interested in at the beginning of the year. First, some fast facts. If we'll turn to the slide for fast facts. Thank you. Our current student count is 188,402. We opened schools with 1,000 more kids than last year. Of course, we're going to get our final numbers that we'll produce for the state in just a few days, September 30th. We projected 189,022, so we're down from our projection about 600 kids. Uh, we are still the 10th largest school system in the United States with 198 schools and centers, 27,500 of the best employees in the country. We have over 26 million square feet of school buildings and office space, 200 languages from all over the world, and 153 Energy Star certified schools, more than any other school system in the country. Our demographics, our free and reduced, uh, price meals population is almost identical to last year. It's down only one tenth of 1%, so really almost no change. Our ELL, uh, numbers are down only three tenths of 1%. We have 400 less ELL kids this year. Our special education student numbers are remaining constant. Also, our demographic numbers have remained constant. As I said, we have a few more days for the final, final enrollment numbers to come in and I'll certainly provide those, um, when they are available. We don't expect the demographics to change much. With food and nutrition, we've got a lot of great initiatives going on with farm-to-table, locally sourced food and salad bars, super snacks, and breakfast in the classroom. Breakfast in the classroom, our participation in breakfast has increased over 3,000 students from last year. Our biggest jump, though, was in our summer program. We had an additional 55,000 participants over last summer. We had food free to our kids and a nominal feed to our parents at 16 sites this summer. And we also included that as part of barbecues at schools, a real chance to bring the community and our schools together. One of the things I just wanted to mention to you, look at these participation numbers and under the leadership of Rodney Taylor and Susan Quinn, we've just seen a great, great increase in the number of folks that are, um, were serving. 143,000 à la carte breakfast and lunches, 23,000 for breakfast average daily, 80,000 for lunch, 125,000 meals over the summer. As I said, that was an increase. And I'm really excited about the work that we're going to do this year. We added, uh, just, uh, at the beginning of this year, our 23rd elementary school doing real food for real kids salad bars. We're going to add 27 more salad bars at our elementary schools this year. And we plan to add 31, uh, schools per year with salad bars until all of our 141 elementary schools have them. And once we complete that, we'll move on to our middle and high schools. For human resources, I want you to know we hired over 1,800 teachers. We had over 6,000 applicants. We had a great, great beginnings for our new teachers. We had, uh, over 1,100, uh, that were able to be there with us for that great beginning. We hired 13 principals and 28 assistant principals. We opened with 97 vacancies. I'd remind the board that two years ago, we had over 200 vacancies. We've really worked to reduce that number. We have, we're down to actually 73 vacancies right now. The majority of those 73, 42 of them are in special education. I will work to provide the board additional details around the breakdown by actual each region because I know many of you would like to know what that looks like in your own particular schools. I don't have that, uh, offhand this evening. One of the things I'm really proud on our hiring, we really moved toward hiring earlier instead of getting away from this mindset that we've had for years, even when I was here, of early contracts. Instead, we just hired everybody earlier. We hired, um, 1,000 new teachers by the end of May. That was 10 times more than we had hired at that same time last year. So going early really allowed us to get more quality teachers lined up before the beginning of the school year. And we're going to continue to review our recruitment and hiring practices to make sure not only that they match the diversity of our students, but also that we are maintaining and adding to our premier workforce. Transportation, I know you've heard accolades about it before and it remains, of course, one of the largest bus fleets in the county and in the country, excuse me, in the country and in the Commonwealth and really around the world. Over 1,600 school buses, 142,000 eligible daily riders, 25 million bus rides per year. You can see all the other facts. I want you to know as part of my Fridays I go out to schools, I was able to go out to two of the four, uh, area transportation officers and hit the intercom to talk directly to the bus drivers as they drive kids around to tell them and thank them for the amazing work they're doing. And I was, uh, really, really, uh, pleased that, uh, Jeff Plannenberg took me around to meet those folks and they were excited. They hadn't seen the superintendent out meeting with them for a long, long time and it was really a great chance to connect with our amazing folks in transportation. But we're not stopping there. We're continuing great work. We're expanding our late bus notifications so parents can sign up if their child is going to be more than 15 minutes late, that they can be contacted. We're going to continue to look for ways as I focus on effectiveness, as it relates to transportation, that we can continue to find efficiencies uh, in, in the way we do our transportation with our communities. I also want you to know we have a continued focus on safety for our kids. We're piling 10 stop arms on buses that sort of extend the typical stop arm almost double or triple, um, to really help stop cars from passing buses, which is a real issue here in Fairfax County and frankly around the Commonwealth. I also want you to know, Jeff shared, that we've communicated earlier with our families this year around the bus stop locations. I know that was always a source of anxiety in my prior school district too, so that we can make adjustments prior to the start of school and minimize route disruptions. Moving on to the FY 2018 budget. As you know, our budget is about $2.8 billion. It's a major, major investment in our, our young people and our education and we've continued in this budget to invest in our teachers with a multi-year strategy to align salaries to the market average. We also have new pay scales this year for our IAs, our public health attendants, our training assistants, food service workers, bus drivers and attendants, and funding to improve compensation for parent liaisons. I want you to know the focus of this year's budget was compensation and under my leadership, we are going to continue to focus on compensation for our teachers and our employees. They are our key priority. And we need, if we are going to be the premier school system in this country, we have to have the premier workforce and we will continue to move toward market competitiveness in all of our employee compensation. So we really need to focus this year and next year on paying our teachers now, on paying all of our employees now. Capital investment, along with investing in people, we have to invest in the facilities that house our students and our employees. We had 1.6 million square feet under construction. That's a total of $352 million. We're beginning additional construction of 1.15 million square feet at the tune of 357 million. We're designing, not constructing, but designing about another 1.9 million square feet of schools, worth over 500 million. And I am proud of the work that our folks have been doing to continue to eliminate the need for this year over 25 temporary classrooms compared to last year. I'm really proud of the work we're doing. You know, we have 26 million square feet, uh, under roof in all of our buildings and that equates to the size of four Pentagon's. Remember, the Pentagon is, did you hear that? I, I put that in here just because I wanted people to go, "Can you believe that?" The Pentagon is the largest office building in America and all of our schools are equal to four Pentagon's. It's really pretty amazing what our facilities folks are doing. We've continued to work on making sure our renovations are going well and we really want to continue to work with our Board of Supervisors. Uh, I was with Supervisor Cook today on his TV show talking about the additional collaboration to invest in our schools and in our capital improvement plan. In fact, speaking of capital improvement, this is what we have on tap to be completed this year. You can see our elementary school renovations, Stratford Landing, Bucknell, Newington Forest, Cherry Run, Forestville, Wayne Wood, Holland Meadows, and White Oaks. We have some renovations that are being completed this year, Langley and West Springfield. And we have some additions at South Lakes High School and Glasgow Middle School. So I'm really proud of that work and of course, we have more on tap just to show you the quality of the, and of course, there's pictures and it may be hard to see it from a distance if you're looking on it at home. These are some pictures from Langley High School and Bucknell Elementary in Stratford. Our folks really in facilities just do an amazing job to create creative learning uh, spaces that allow our kids to really achieve the goals that we've created in our strategic plan for Portrait of a Graduate. Many of you know, of course, our work with turf fields continues. We have a replacement cycle and TJ was the final field to be done with the Joint County Turf Task Force. That was a cooperative effort, as you know, between the schools, county, youth groups, and private funding. And you see also Madison's was completed. Next on tap, we will be replacing Marshall's turf field. Project Momentum is one of the things I am really proud of. I wasn't superintendent when it started, but I'm proud and I will tell you, we will continue it, which is really making sure we're getting all our schools fully accredited by the definition that the Virginia Department of Education gives. Full accreditation designation from BDOE. We had six schools go from partially to fully accredited. Cameron and Herndon Elementary went from accredited three-year with warning to fully accredited. Poe was in year two with warning and went to fully accredited. We saw 16 of our Project Momentum schools make gains in English and math. Saratoga and Coats had double-digit gains in English and math. Fort Belvoir had double-digit gains in math, the upper school did. And so we see numerous other schools that also made gains uh, and several schools that made gains in all four content areas. We are going to continue to target our resources and talent around these schools to get all schools to full accreditation. And I think we were the only school division in the Commonwealth that had two schools that were in year three of warning and a year-two of warning school to go from that level of warning to full accreditation. So we're going to continue to do that work and I really want to let you know now we have seven schools left, uh, that we need to get over the mark for full accreditation. You can see those listed. Some are just in year one. We really see that as just a blip that we can restore that this year. A couple, as you can see, Mount Vernon Woods Elementary and Saratoga are year four or five. But we have strong plans in place to ensure that those schools will be fully accredited. And I want you to know for some of the board members that are new, back in 2014 and 15, we had 18 schools not, um, fully accredited, accredited with warning. We are down to seven now. We've made tremendous progress and I'm confident we are going to continue on a trajectory to have all of our schools fully accredited at the end of this year. In fact, if we had the new rubric by the Virginia Department of Education that's being proposed, all of our schools would already be fully accredited. Our model of Project Momentum was showcased by the Virginia Department of Education at their School Improvement Conference this summer. I'm really, uh, pleased that the work that Mark Greenfelder and all of our regional assistant superintendents have done, along with the executive principals, in making Project Momentum a success for all of our schools. We have done a lot of work. We have a little bit more to do and I am confident we will be up to the task. For professional learning, of course, to be a premier school system, we have to make professional learning of all of our employees a key piece. You can see almost 2,000 people in our academy classes. Our leadership conference had 1,488. Of course, I was there. It felt like it was just four or five people in the, in the room at George Mason. It felt like it was just four or five people in the room at George Mason, but it was a great turnout for that leadership conference. And you can see our symposiums, our Great Beginning Summer Institute for New Teachers I already talked about, our Institute with Advanced Academics and Promising Practices and Diversity. We did our literacy symposium again. We've had that for multiple years, along with our AP Summer Institute. We've continued to do work with project-based learning that really amplifies the portrait of a graduate outcomes we want, and work with our high school ESOL curriculum training as we do some new adoptions in our approach to high school ESOL. We really had lots of stuff this summer as well. 8,000 of our teachers participated in learning programs. We had projects ranging from online Chinese to digital citizenship, newcomer resources for English learners, coding and innovative technology curriculum training. So really proud of the work that our teachers are doing to continue to be learners. Summer programming, we had elementary and middle school intervention, including our Title I schools, things like B2K, Young Scholars, Curious Minds, Early Head Start, over 3,000 kids in that. We had our high school academic programs, credit recovery, ESOL, online campus, self-directed. TJ had its summer school, over 9,000 kids. We had our ESY for our special education kids, almost 4,000 kids. And of course, our enrichment institutes that we've had a long history of doing with STEM, our Elementary Institute for the Arts, and our Institute for the Arts, our Tech Adventure, and our TJ Tech Camp. Almost 19,000 students participated in some form of our summer enrichment programming. And of course, we had countless volunteers and over 800 teachers and administrators, counselors that made all that happen. A few of other initiatives, as I wrap up here, as part of our strategic plan, we continue to want to have a comprehensive professional development plan. We have got to get real, real serious about what we fundamentally want every employee, whether they're a teacher or a principal, to know. What are the fundamental areas of expertise and skills we want them to know? And we've just finished our work on surveying our folks for those offerings and needs, and we're going to be moving forward with a plan very soon that really targets the professional development for all of our employees. We completed our rollout of our ESOL programming, and we've continued that pilot expansion. And we are on track to see a dramatic increase in credits earned and students on track for high school graduation as a result of that. We also worked on Universal Screener. We had it piloted in 15 schools this year. It's a way to really effectively assess kids' foundational reading and math skills, and we've expanded it to all of our elementary schools this year. I'll be giving you an update on it later this year. Genesis Works, you know, is a technical internship program where local companies partner with us. The future of education at our high school level is not just going to be doing academic curriculum in classrooms, but getting kids out in internships and apprenticeships to get real-world job skills so they can be ready to be college and career-ready. I'm very excited about the work Genesis Works is doing, and I want to applaud my predecessor, Dr. Garza, for bringing those folks and that program here to Fairfax County Public Schools. We've expanded it this year to Bryant, and we're planning next year for Annandale, Herndon, Marshall, and Oakton High Schools, and doubling the number of participants. We also are continuing to work with our Office of Children to complete a comprehensive school readiness plan, so we can expand early education offerings to students, so they're prepared. Didn't get a chance to get it on here before the time was up, but FCPS on, you already heard about that in the work session, but 17,000-plus laptops out to kids and over 215 of those MiFi internet devices that kids can take home for those kids that still don't have the internet access. Talking about kids and partnerships with kids, I'd tell you, what a wonderful program in Collect for Kids that we're doing to distribute school supplies, backpacks, calculators. Served almost 40,000 kids in Fairfax. That number's increased 150% since 2011. It's a great job with the Office of Communications and Community Relations doing that work. I'm really just so proud of them. We had over 20 partnering entities, and I tell you what, our focus on putting our Collect for Kids in areas where we made it more marketable and really broadened the horizon of this work so that more folks get involved. We have a new mobile-friendly website, social media ads. We're going to continue to make sure that no kid comes into Fairfax not with the supplies and resources they need to be ready to learn. So I really appreciate the work that's been done there. We've heard a lot of discussion even tonight about mental health, social-emotional supports. Ani Harita, you just did a great job at the last school board meeting, talking about this issue too. And I want to remind folks about our Crisis Text that we have service. Any student in need of help can text this to 85511, and this has been another partnership between our county and our school system. This past year, 281 youth called in and identified themselves, 281 youth as FCPS students. That number is up from only 20 kids three years ago. So we really are pleased that that hotline, this Crisis Text, is something that kids are now really using, and we need to continue to think about how we can advertise, and that's another one of those things with the SAC folks, that we can talk about, how do we can increase student awareness that that resource is out there. In fact, one other resource in closing is making sure all of our parents and students and community members know that while I'm superintendent, there really are a lot of schools to manage and run every day, and we have a terrific region structure. We have five regions, and I want you to know that you can go really to our FCPS website and find the region office. You just contact, click on Contact Us, and the region page will appear, along with the schools that they serve. And you can easily identify which school is in your region and reach out to those assistant superintendents. I was one of those six years ago, and we want to meet your needs. We want to resolve your problems in a proactive manner. I really feel good about the school year that we have had, and I tell you what, it is a feeling of joy to be back in Fairfax County Public Schools, seeing the amazing work that our students, staff, and parents and community are doing on behalf of our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Mr. McElveen has a comment question?
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. So, Dr. Braybrand, I want to congratulate you on a very thorough and exciting presentation. And I do want to say, it's also a historic presentation. I think in the history of FCPS, our superintendent has never led with our Food and Nutrition Services work. And I want to thank you for that, because as all of us on this board know, our students cannot learn without a full stomach. And I think that just reflects all the work that has been done by this board over the past number of years, as well as Susan Quinn and Rodney. And I do want to applaud everyone for that work. It's truly tremendous. And Kristin Michael, of course. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz wants to comment?
I just have a brief comment on your fast facts, because I feel like we often miss the fact that we have 20, I think it said something like 24,600 full-time employees, but that doesn't cover a lot of our employees. And I don't know if maybe Ms. Michael or someone knows the figure off the top of their head, but I think it is in the neighborhood of the top 13,000s in terms of part-time.
Correct. We have another 12,000 to 13,000 of part-time temporary employees.
Right. So really, I mean, you know, the magnitude of living in a 1.15 million resident county in a region like ours is not that we employ 27,500 people, it's that we employ, you know, 40,000-plus people. And that if you combine our full-time plus our part-time, you know, those together make us the largest employer in the Commonwealth. And so when we talk with the community about our budget, or we talk with our state legislators about changing the LCI, the impact of, you know, another thousand students, although we missed the mark by, I think you said 642, and I'll be asking more questions about that later, because that means we missed the mark by almost 50%. I want to know about that. But that's the real, understanding, you know, the magnitude of the reach and the impact. If Fairfax County is the economic engine for the Commonwealth of Virginia, then FCPS is the economic engine for the Commonwealth of Virginia. I mean, we're, you know, we're at the heart of the employment, the education, the worst traffic in the United States of America with the largest bus fleet. You know, all of these things are tangled. You know, we saw students tonight, you know, concerned about energy costs. I think they should be far more concerned about the fuel that's going into the largest school bus fleet in the United States of America, that's on the roads, that they're all stuck in, you know, late school, late to board meetings tonight, you know, et cetera. So I thank you for this presentation, putting some things in context, and I look forward to continuing the use of good data to help us inform good policy.
Yes, we are the second-largest employer in the Commonwealth of Virginia, the only one that's larger is Walmart. Mr. Moon would like to comment?
Just a couple of questions. Dr. Braybrand, thanks for the presentation. You are going through those 19 slides in a very efficient manner, so I might have missed this. Please forgive me if I did that. The number of teachers hired, 1,124 out of more than 6,000 applicants. Could you comment on some trends on those data, whether you see increasing or decreasing, or you're finding it more difficult to find qualified teachers?
Right. I pledge to this board, in the next couple of days, you'll have the teacher breakdown by region, so you can see it by school and by classification of the type of teachers, where we're missing, say, like one, four ESOL teachers or three AAP teachers. I want to get you that breakdown. I'm also working on the breakdown for the diversity numbers. It's raw numbers right now. I want to make sure I'm right before I get those out, and I'll have those out to you, really, I think, by next week, Mr. Moon.
Okay.
Overall, though, I would tell you, the governor has asked, I'm attending a conference next month in Charlottesville, to talk with the superintendents about the crisis of the teacher shortage in the Commonwealth of Virginia. It's happening in Fairfax, it's happening everywhere in the Commonwealth, and we are going to have to think out of the box and re-invite, re-invite our young people, re-invite our career switchers, re-invite folks maybe who've retired to get into education. We have made this, we need to bring the joy back to education. And I shared just a few days ago in the Washington Post, I want Fairfax County to be the Disney World for teachers, that they can come here and be and do what they wanted to do when they first dreamed about being a teacher. And I'll get you the latest numbers. I think, you know, as I said, we're down from 200 vacancies two years ago, so we're in a better position than we were. But anybody that doesn't have a full-time teacher in front of them is not getting the quality education that Fairfax County schools needs to deliver. So we still have work to do.
So when you provide more information, maybe in a week or so, could you also address how we are addressing those vacancies?
Yes, sir. In fact, I can tell you, the options we've been doing include long-term sub, daily sub, using a resource teacher that really should be doing their resource work, but we have that teacher cover a classroom. We've also, in some cases, kept some larger classes together with the intent to split those classes once we get that additional teacher. And I know class size is an issue. I'm meeting with folks in the community about that, but this is why it is so important that we address this teacher shortage. We've got to get great people in front of our young people.
Just one more question, Dr. Braybrand. This is about temporary classrooms. I'm glad to hear that we have been able to reduce number of temporary classrooms, but that's only 25.
Right.
We have close to probably 1,100 temporary classrooms. I understand that we can never eliminate all the temporary classrooms, because we use those when you have a construction going on.
Right.
But that's 1,100, that's quite a lot, and the number has been growing over the last 20-year period. So with the reduction of 25, that will probably take us, what, 40 years at that rate? Or is that the plan?
That's not the plan. That's not the plan. I don't have the plan for you tonight, but I do know it's one of the upcoming agenda topics for either our work session or one of our school board meetings, and I will make sure Mr. Plattenberg is ready to address those issues in more detail with you.
You know, Dr. Braybrand, you know, before I retire, I really want to have really concrete plan implemented to reduce, you know, eliminate most of those temporary classrooms.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Evans would like to speak, then Karen Corbett Sanders and Ms. Palchak.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. That's a great report, and I appreciate it very much. I too was pleased to hear the food and nutrition advances and the plan to get salad bars in all our elementary schools. I was at Annandale Terrace the other day and saw them using their salad bar there. Very, very popular, so glad to hear that. I did want to point out, in the transportation area, this also, I agree, we did have a very smooth start this year, and that's a great tribute to our folks in transportation. I did want to point out, I don't have the numbers in my head, but the eligible daily bus riders, that's a lot higher than it was only a couple of years ago. And the number of school buses, really only a very small increase in the number of buses. So that's a tribute to the efficiency of our transportation staff, and kudos to Jeff Plattenberg and Francine Furby for that. So just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you. I want to follow up on one of the questions that Mr. Moon posed regarding the vacancies. It would be helpful, when you provide us some data in the next few days, if you could also provide us data on the turnover rate of individual schools, so that, for example, is it just one or two per school, or are some schools losing more teachers based on their proximity to be able to easily move to another jurisdiction for more money?
Okay.
The second is regarding the trailers and temporary classrooms. I just wanted to remind our colleagues that that is on a future work session in October to be discussed. So we are following up on that, Mr. Moon. And finally, when we're talking about transportation, and I would like to thank Mr. Plattenberg and his staff for the Herculean efforts that they have done to start the school year, because it has been very smooth. I would encourage in future transportation overviews that we also talk about the number of connector bus passes we give to our students in middle and high school, because that is a complement to the school buses and the school bus routes, because as we have cut back on budgets, many of our schools have gone to a single after-school bus per week at the high school level, and our students are using those connector school bus passes, or those connector passes. Would like to see in the future more encouragement for the use of those passes, and ideally consider putting them on the back of our student ID cards so that it becomes seamless for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Palchak, and then Ms. McGlocklin.
Yes, thank you for a wonderful first report from me, Dr. Braybrand. For transportation, apparently we are now, Northern Virginia is home to the worst traffic jams in the nation, so we have additional challenges, and I appreciate everything that our transportation staff do. I also want to point out that beyond, you know, running an excellent system, I know that they've quite a few times reached out when they've heard from elementary school families when bus stops were not appropriate for children. So we really appreciate that they definitely put safety first of our kids, and especially our most vulnerable kids. I really appreciate that. And Mr. Plattenberg is not here today. I had a couple of questions, and I'm sorry if you did mention this, talking about the, I know the special ed is our largest vacancy, and we had a successful pilot of the IA to teacher cohort last year under the guidance of Dr. Amy. So I don't know if you'll be providing an update on that this year and how that's going and the future of that.
We can do that, absolutely. We'll be glad to do that. I'll get that for you.
That would be wonderful. And I know you had some initiatives, not all on there, and I have emailed you and Dr. Durian, but I would also love to hear how we're doing on the dual immersion programs in our elementary schools. I know you mentioned the ESOL, but would love to know how that is going and the future of that. But, Aral, thank you again and for focusing on the important data, and we look forward to a great year together.
Thank you.
Ms. McGlocklin, and then Ms. Kees-Gamar.
So I do appreciate the questions that some of my colleagues have raised about additional information that we would want to have as part of this understanding. I also think that having context for our community is important too for teacher morale. that having context for our community is important, too, for teacher morale, and for the community confidence in the attractiveness of Fairfax County schools. So, being able to put into context regional and national data on vacancies, I mean, when you have 200 schools, 200 vacancies, or, you know, how many teaching positions to 200 vacancies, the number sounds big, but that's if we were a very small school district. For our size, 200 vacancies in context may not actually be a number that is alarming, put into context. So, I think that would be good, because I still think it's important that we make sure that while we focus on where we want to improve, we also want to make sure that we celebrate the fact that we're still a very strong district. And I would also ask, and maybe Ms. Kofex, I didn't know if you might be asking some of this, but just making sure we're capturing the data on our newcomers and the impact that's having on schools, because being a large county of over a million people, it's very different when we have newcomer populations coming in. Some districts, some districts within Fairfax County, we may not see many newcomer students, and in others, we may see a larger number. And so, some of our individual school board members, when I've had conversations with them, they're talking about how the schools are absorbing those additional students, and what impact that has. So, I would just like to see that. And then, in support of all of the great accolades that my colleagues have already said tonight, I mean, it's a great report, so much to celebrate, but I did want to give an extra shout-out to Mark Greenfelder and the work that he and all of your staff are doing on Project Momentum. It's really exciting to see that not only are we being very intentional in helping student success, but that we are really using the data to help us in measuring and really directing our resources in the most effective way.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kies-Gamara, and then Ms. Darnett Kofex.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for your report and your Disneyland analogy.
Thank you.
Onto a more serious subject, and I wanted to follow up on Ms. McLaughlin's comment about newcomers. I know that there is, or at least some buzz in the community about families coming to our school district as a result of the hurricanes and the devastation.
Yes.
And I'd like to hear more about any monitoring that we may be doing, and particularly, I think, our community may be interested in what support we may be able to provide to those families. I also wanted to follow up on the temporary classrooms. You said we'd been able to eliminate 25 classrooms. I'd like to know where those were.
Okay.
And also, I think the last question had to do with, actually, I think I covered it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Darnett Kofex.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for this report. Are you, I don't know, he's talking to somebody.
No, I'm just, this is my first time doing this, so I'm kind of real-time, and just making sure everybody's hearing the thing when it goes, "Oh, you want this," so that I don't have to go back tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m. and send out all the emails. It's kind of, you know, real-time, boom, and we're all good.
Chris's thumbs up. Thank you, Chris. Yes, I, Ms. McLaughlin gave me a great, as well as Ms. Kies-Gamara gave me, an entryway for this. I thank you for this report. I think it's, as many of my colleagues have expressed, lots of things to celebrate. We've had a great opening, so I don't want to dismiss that at all, and I really appreciate your energy and enthusiasm and desire to make this a place, even in the midst of a teacher crisis, where teachers really want to come. And that's extremely important, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
I do want, I did want to talk about the ELL numbers. They say that they're about the same as last year, but last year, I know, particularly in my district, we got a large number between January and April of SCIF students and Level One learners. So, I would like to, you know, continue to have those numbers broken down, the levels for us.
Sure, by level, by region.
Yes, by level, by region. That's extremely important. Also, sharing the accolades for all of the staff, and, but since I'm specifically talking about this, you know, some of the news on, you know, some of the Project Momentum schools that have, schools that are accredited with warning are in my region, but I am very confident in the work that I've had, I had extensive, as many of us have, and we're going to have a work session on Project Momentum, and we're doing the right things. It's just, we need to continue to do them, and we need to focus. And it's almost like we need individual learning plans for each school, if you will.
That's what we're doing. And I've been in contact with the state superintendent. I sent Mark Greenfelder down to represent us and myself before the Board of Education on Wednesday, yesterday, to make a case for our schools that still are not fully accredited, because I believe, and this is one of the things the Board of Education is asking superintendents, does your district have the capacity to take a school that is not fully accredited to full accreditation? And the bottom line is, Project Momentum has proven itself in the last three years here, that it does, that this district does have it. I'm confident we're going to be able to get the remaining schools across the line this year.
Oh, I thank you. I, and I, and I look forward to working with you on that. And finally, though, the continued expansion of the ESOL pilot programs. I know, last spring, Dr. Lockard and Dr. Duran put together, they already have, and I think you and I have a meeting scheduled about this issue. You know, we were hopeful that we could get some funding for it in last year's budget, but that didn't happen. So, it's important that what we do moving forward is, I think they laid great groundwork, and it's going to be imperative, particularly if the numbers of the Level One and SCIFs are what I, what they started in the spring continue. The expansion of those pilot programs, of robust programming, is extremely important.
I've also sent the state superintendent some, some frameworks for additional flexibility for our EL learners around the graduation rate, the GCI cohort, so that they have more time to be here in our country, acquire language skills, before they're asked to be in a four-year graduation cohort and count it against us. So, I'm really excited about that. Also, giving some of our kids, even at our elementary school, a chance not to have to take the science SOL before they have a certain number of semesters. We have that rule for English and math, and we don't have it for science. Science is some of the most English-rich vocabulary assessments that we have. So, I, I am hopeful, from the conversations I've had with the state superintendent, that what we're proposing can be a model for the Commonwealth of Virginia. We'll know something in the next few months, and I'll be updating the board when I have more information.
I appreciate that, because, you know, your staff has taught me that, you know, intensive literacy is the best way to help these, these children, and I want to ensure that we have the best programs in that area.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I will add a couple of comments. Again, as my colleagues have said, I've been very pleased with Project Momentum. I'm blown away by the, the report, the focused help that's going on in schools. I think we're all very grateful to Mark Greenfelder, and, but the work of all the staff. My heard, many of my heard in schools have just simply turned around.
Absolutely.
And there have been challenges. The amount of staff that goes in and works in the classroom, with the classroom teacher, with the children, we aren't pulling people out, we are putting more people in and working every day to figure out what's needed by the children and the teachers in those classrooms on the ground. It really is developing specific plans, school by school, child by child, and it works. It is just amazing. I am very, very grateful for that. Very focused help, tremendous. And it's kind of nice to know that other people are noticing, and we have, we have figured, it's not easy, there's no silver bullet, it's a lot of hard work, day by day, but it's work that goes on in classrooms with children and teachers. Thank you for your advocacy on science and the science SOL, because science is, the vocabulary of science is very, very important. And, as we all know, our children's ability to be able to pass some of the state tests is dependent on their acquisition of vocabulary. So, thank you for that. Also, again, acknowledging our opening school readiness, not only in transportation, but in renovations. I have a number of schools that have very difficult renovations, continue to have difficult renovations, a lot of work over the summer, tremendous work. And we were ready, we opened, and we had some tense last weeks, but that always happens with us. And I think creating double and triple crews of work, and we were open and ready, and the teachers were delighted. I think they were a little concerned at times, but as usual, our facility staff, they, they meet their deadlines, and our classrooms are ready. So, I'm very grateful for that. And, Dr. Braybrand, thank you for spending Fridays in schools.
You're welcome.
And for talking to the bus drivers. That was great. It means a lot to all of our hard-working teachers and students to see you and the schools, and to see our senior staff. They know that they are valued, and that you're actually trying to learn what their needs are, and how we can support them better. So, thank you for that.
Well, thank you. I made it to the Woodson Complex with Jeff to see the facilities, and I think Mary Beth, we're going to see all the IT folks next Friday. It's not just schools. We're going to get out and see the work that folks are doing, recognize them for that, but also find out where some of the challenges are, and make sure that we're being proactive and not reactive on addressing those. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Our next item, I don't know, Dr. Braybrand, if you want to do this from where you are?
Yeah, I got.
Okay, you're ready to go.
I'm ready to go.
Okay. The next item is 4.04, the superintendent recommendation for Jeb Stuart High School renaming.
Thank you, Chairman Strauss. It's my pleasure tonight to come to you with my presentation around my recommendation for Stuart High naming. I just want to remind the board of the process and timeline. Over a year and a half ago, the school board did direct my predecessor, Dr. Karen Garza, to begin community engagement around the name change for Stuart High School. Since then, there's been community meetings that have been held. We've had an ad hoc committee that was formed, and reports were given to the school board. In my time here, when I arrived July, in July, the board voted to move forward with the renaming process, and based on that, I moved forward with our leadership team to convene that process under the parameters of Regulation 8170. We conducted two Saturday meetings, the first Saturday where names were proposed, and the second Saturday where names were voted on. And I want to thank my entire leadership team, many of them, led by Steve Lockard, who did all the logistic meetings, all the different people, Mary Beth and her folks that were out, Marty and Susan, and people who gave up a tremendous amount of time, not just in preparing for this, and frankly, after the incidents in Charlottesville, we had to prepare for the worst, to make sure that we would have a positive process. And I have to tell you, the community lifted my spirits. They rose to the occasion. We had both Saturdays where, without incident, we had cordial and respectful discussions on a very topic that was of great interest, of course, in the community. And I'm proud of the community, and I'm proud of our leadership folks who, to the best of their ability, and myself, to make sure that we move forward under the parameters of that regulation. The results of the community voting from the second Saturday, residents had the option to choose the top three names, first choice, in them choosing would be given three points, second choice, two points, and third choice, one. That's per the regulation. Seventy-three names were suggested, 932 households voted, and I have a link for all of that information there. And residents could choose their top three choices, and I went over the waiting already, and, and that's on our website. My recommendations, I've decided to give this board the top five vote-getters from this process. I believe that the top five names give the school board the framework and the flexibility to make a solid decision for the Stuart community. I believe that we have worked hard to bring this to you after a long period of time, so that you can best decide what is right for this school and this community. The associated cost, I know, has been another interest of both board members and community members, and we've broken that down based on a complete name change and a Stuart-only name change. The differential is a little over 300,000, it would be 500, a little over 500, if it were to retain the name, or to have the name of Stuart only as the name, and about 800,000 if there was a complete name change. And as far as the funding mechanism, in just a few days, we will be setting up on our website, a system where donations can be accepted to offset the costs associated with the name change, and looking forward to working with our Ed Foundation to do that. We intend to make possible donations by cash, check, or credit card. There will be the ability on this website to designate the following categories, an undesignated category, as well as a category for athletics, a category for performing arts, a category for equipment, and a category for capital. We believe that any amount over what is needed for those accounts will go into the undesignated fund. And I'll be providing weekly updates to the board. The ability will be such that you can donate anonymously if you wish, and there are zero administrative costs associated with us doing this setup. Finally, next steps. As you know, as part of the regulation, it was my job to bring you one or more names. I have, as I understand it, fulfilled my obligation under that regulation. Next, October 16th, the school board will have a work session to discuss the recommended names, and on the 26th, the school board would vote on the name. The name transition would be completed by the start of the 2019-2020 school year at the latest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I'm asking my colleagues, I see some lights. Does this indicate people who wish to speak on this item? Okay, please review your light. I am not sure. Exact, thank you. All right, so that we have this right. I will call on Ms. Fatakana first.
I just had a quick question about the survey itself. Do you know if there was any data collected on whether any of the 932 households actually had current Jeb Stuart students, or was it just everyone?
Do we know the answer to that, Mary Beth? And if we don't, we can just tell folks we don't, and we can file.
That included a number of Jeb Stuart current students, yes. Is that the question?
Do we know how many?
Oh, how many of them were current students? We could get that, but I don't currently have that.
Okay, could we get the votes on, like, just the voting record for the households that do have Jeb Stuart students?
We can see if we captured that, because we basically captured whether, we, all we captured really was the address.
Okay.
And we had, like, basically, the first name of the person at that address. We didn't necessarily capture whether they were a student or not a student, so that, I'm not sure we can, we can break it down by that statistic.
Okay, thank you.
We allowed, there, I know there were a number of students that came, because I helped register them, but I don't think we had the exact number by student.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then I have Ms. Schultz and Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Schultz?
So, thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I had expressed, and this isn't, I don't think, a surprise, a little bit of a concern that this is more of a vote tally to the board, as opposed to an actual recommendation. I mean, we could relatively easily do a takeaway of what the top five names were, and, you know, come up with that. So, I personally was hoping that there was a little bit more of a synthesis. And I understand you've walked into sort of the eye of the Harvey, Irma, Puerto Rico, you know, the hurricane after hurricane after hurricane equivalent of the fallout of the board's work, you know, that began long before you got here. One of the things in particular I have a concern about is, is that there looked to be a concerted effort to combine all of the Marshall-related names. So, there could have been, and this is my concern, of the, of the first-place votes, for example, that were cast. There were 932 ballots overall, that I recall, 930 first-place ballots, and then an attrition. If my Excel would work, I could bring it up, but I've already sent a message over there that it's not working. But, the concern that maybe someone who picked, for example, because they knew that we haven't, we have another Marshall High School, someone might have picked Justice Thurgood Marshall High School, and that's the only name they wanted, because they, they had a hope that we would eventually call it Justice instead of Marshall.
Right. Right.
And that they wouldn't really advocate for a Marshall High School. But nonetheless, that's the way the vote tally was done. The problem is, is that there were multiple versions of the Stuart name, and those were not rolled together in the vote tallies for the Stuart total. And that actually, unfortunately, exponentially, not exponentially, it's not fair, it statistically increases even more the total of Stuart name vote gets, which you had first-place total increases to 852, your overall total points increased to 1,004, and that gets the Stuart combination names to the most number of ballots cast, 382, by about 25% over the next closest and a big attrition from that point forward. So my question is, you know, why not include the tallies that are similar? And then I heard somebody, and I don't recall who it was, what was the thought process that you all had of having an open, you know, basically an open naming process the first Saturday that anybody could throw in a name, but then only people within the boundary? Because what you, what we wound up with is basically, after a two-year effort, 5% of the people who could have voted bothered to vote. And that's a, you know, that's a pretty paltry, you know, turnout. Frankly, I thought it was going to be substantially larger.
Right. Let me do that last question first. We ended up breaking up the Saturdays because we had a concern, I had a concern. First of all, I take full responsibility for how we administered everything since I've come here. I take full responsibility for it. The Saturday, we were concerned that if we tried in one Saturday to list names and then have the vote, that determined, based on the names that would have been provided, there could have been a different level of turnout, or people going, if I only knew that name was in the names, I would have voted. So we wanted to separate that process. Plus, the regulation, as I interpret it, was very clear that the voting would only be about those in the Stuart households, but it wasn't about being able to contribute to what the name of the school would be. And so we really wanted to separate that. We wanted to make sure everyone knew anyone was invited to be able to come and provide input into what the name would be. Again, that's my interpretation of the regulation as superintendent.
Right.
And there are different ways it could have been done, but that was the one. I do want to just check on the Stuart thing. Steve, do you know, or Mary Beth, I mean, were there other Stewarts beyond the Stuart and Stuart Raiders that were listed as names?
There were other Stewarts, but they, we didn't cluster them together because they weren't related. For example, there was a Jeff Stewart.
Okay.
And then there was a Stuart who was a painter of...
Gilbert Stewart?
Gilbert Stewart.
And he didn't get, he didn't get a large number of names?
And then there was a Stuart Thomas. The reason we put all the Marshall ones together, because they were all speaking to the same person.
Okay.
The Stuart ones are different, different Stewarts.
Okay.
And I can appreciate that, but I would say that the intent of those people was, the end objective was to wind up with the school being called Stuart. I mean, that's the reason other people, I mean, if, what I don't, what I feel like we've done is, you know, the word earlier was disenfranchised, is if you say, well, those people picked a different Stuart, well, yes, but they, what they said, that in some combination, they wanted the end result to be, and frankly, I thought most of the videos that were against it ended up not being very articulate, because what it said is, is that we haven't been calling it Jeb Stuart at all, we've been calling it Stuart. And so those votes, to me, spoke that they, you know, even if you change the first name, the end result is, we just want to name it Stuart.
I take that feedback. I appreciate that feedback, and I do think that's something the board has to consider as it moves forward now in this next step.
And I am worried about, you know, our student representative brought up the matter, some of the students who spoke this evening. I am concerned about the fact that I think there was a tag day on the voting day of Saturday. And, you know, student, you know, I mean, I'm a mother of student athletes, and I know all the dedication that they do, and, you know, any given Saturday...
Yeah, I know.
...is difficult. And so the question is, you know, was there any consideration to doing, you know, effectively, like a round robin? And I know you sort of build in with the bullet votes, you know, while everybody can lay out their choices, but that's assuming they can make the meeting in the first place. And so, you know, limiting it to, well, it's this Saturday, it's this Saturday only, and if you have anything else, oh, well.
Yeah, we looked at the calendar. I mean, we definitely had the tyranny of the calendar as we looked at this, so I don't have a perfect answer for that. There was also honestly some considerations about security concerns after Charlottesville and whether we should have canceled all the activities associated with Stuart. And I just, I just didn't feel, as superintendent with our students, I wanted to let them continue to have the opportunity to fully participate in all the things that other high school kids were doing. And that was a judgment call, but I did not cancel activities for that Saturday. And I do want you all to know that. It was, that was something that sort of came up from a security perspective.
All right, Ms. McLaughlin, and then Mr. Wilson.
So I, it is my understanding that we will be having a work session on this where the board will together be able to deliberate on how we take in these results. I do want to say, Dr. Braybrand, on the one hand, I very much appreciate that the recommendation, as you looked at the top five, it's not just a tally, but frankly, in there, there are some choices that are geographic names. And that is something that the board is going to have to be thinking about, that if we look at the fact that not a single name out of 72, which would have been extremely difficult to achieve, had a 50% plus majority, then it comes back to the board again of having to figure out how best to deal with something that has fractured the community for two years. And so I'm pleased, actually, that I think, on the one hand, what you're doing is giving us a chance to think as broadly as possible. I've said time and again that I think we have to find a way to help the community heal. And so I think you're, the, bringing forward those five names will give the 12 of us time to talk with one another, and I'm very hopeful that we find the best way forward. One of the things, though, that I guess, again, might have been helpful, just from a public standpoint, is even in your recommendation to have that kind of recognition, you know, that this is hard, that you found even for yourself, you couldn't necessarily come forward with a clear recommendation of, you know, one or two top names, and that this...
That's right.
...reflects the complexity.
There's no easy answer here. There is no easy answer. If there was, I'd be providing it for you tonight, but there isn't.
Yeah. So I do want you to know, I recognize that. The second thing is that, and this is something that I've tried to get a sense from the funding standpoint, and then the timeline. So we've said to the community in terms of setting expectations that it's our goal that by no later than 2019 school year, which is essentially two years from now, that we would have this transition in place. So I would appreciate, by the time we have a work session conversation, that maybe you and the sta, you and staff can look at this a little bit more carefully, how are we defining the transition? Because if the community is wanting to move forward, we recognize there's infrastructure costs and uniform costs to the transition, but if the name has created pain in the community, and yet then we're going to keep it for two more years, I'm kind of struggling with that one myself. Like, either we're trying to move forward and we recognize that there'd be some, I just think that's a dialogue that needs to happen. Does that make sense?
Yes. I'm just trying to remember, did staff recommend the, Steve, Dr. Lockard, did staff recommend that year timeframe, or was, that was a prior discussion?
Part of the motion.
That was part of the motion that the board had. So that's certainly a dialogue that we can, we can have if necessary.
So I appreciate that, and I think the staff also can appreciate that the reason the board relies on you and our full-time employees is because we need that guidance. So I don't want any one of the 12 of us to, as well-intentioned as we might be, come up with a, with a transition date...
Right.
...if it's not set with, with a rationale for why that would be the case.
If the board is asking for me, again, I've been here two months, and wants me to look at whether this could be accelerated if a name change is made, I can certainly do that and be prepared to talk about that at the work session.
Well, thank you. I guess I wanted to go a little deeper, and yes, please know, all my line of questioning is with sensitivity that you, as Ms. Schultz said, arrived here, and you've had a lot of nice little hurricanes to take care of. What I meant was that as the board tries to discuss this at the upcoming work session, it might help us to have some of the logistical information from staff on, if the board were to decide to accelerate or change that timeline, what might that look like?
Okay.
Just logistically. You can help us with the logistics piece.
I get the spirit of that, absolutely.
Yeah. And then from the funding timeline, people have said, so ideally, we want to try and not draw upon our own operational costs.
Right.
Before you joined us, I did say publicly that, in the end, if we believe this is the right thing to do, then, as a system, then we need to do it. And so, but I think that from a public expectation standpoint, we're going to need to get it a little more clarity around what will we do? Because people have said to me, so what happens if the, if the anywhere from $500,000 to $800,000 doesn't come in, then what? And I think we need to be prepared as a system to say, what, do we just say, okay, well then, we're going to have to find it in our operations?
Okay.
Just something to think about.
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
The other thing is that it was shared with me that the turf field, one option, again, I'm trying to dispel, like...
Right.
You know, rumors versus reality. Is there the possibility of spray paint the turf areas rather than actually ripping up the turf?
Okay.
Because that's a significant cost, regardless if we change the name. I mean, and everybody in the audience knows, whether we keep Stuart, whether we change it to something else, it was showing that the turf replacement cost would be the same. So I'm not showing my cards or where I am. I am completely open-minded on where we need to go.
Got it.
But I do think that if that's true, then that's something that will be very helpful to the community in understanding that we might have some far less expensive costs.
Spray paint versus replacement. I have, I have that, okay.
I mean, I know people are laughing, but when we've had graffiti problems, that is what has been done in the past. So I just wanted to raise that as...
I'll look into it.
Okay. And otherwise, I will look forward to hearing from my esteemed colleague from Mason on what she's hearing, because she does represent the district and therefore is, her ear is closer to the ground on how the community is on this. So hearing tonight, some people saying, why not then, you know, try and at least get a sense through a vote that takes place during the school day, in the school, closed vote? I mean, that's, that was what I heard this evening, and I, I thought, you know, on the one hand, not wanting to further extend the complicated nature, but to be honest, as we all know, you're bringing us five names because there was no clear winner. So I, those are, that's food for thought. So thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for your, your hard work on this.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wilson, then Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for this presentation.
Thank you.
I like to think in terms of the war itself and not the current hurricanes, but, and yet I'm sure you know that the Civil War was the bloodiest war in American history. So I think that our long, long conversations and many, many discussions sometimes needed reflect the echoes of that great tragedy in American history, the Civil War, of all those, of all the men who gave their lives during that conflict. I did, I did want to just touch on something that you mentioned, because you mentioned that you, that you provided us both the framework and flexibility. And I just wanted to, just to talk a little bit about that, because...
Right.
What, and maybe you could just, maybe just expound a little bit on what you meant when you said you gave us a framework.
Right. I think within those five names exists a name that the board included in the original resolution when I arrived. Within those five names, there is a diversity of both personal names and geographic names. And within those five names, there's actual diversity within the personal names. So I think there is a range within those five names to give the board the flexibility to really review what is appropriate for that school and that community. And that's the spirit and why I went with those five.
Okay, so, but I mean, that sounds like, I mean, I guess that really is sort of the flexibility, but was there something else in mind when you said framework? I mean, I guess I'm thinking ahead towards our conversation that we're going to have as a board. Was there some process of discussion that you thought that maybe we could follow that might lead us to a successful conclusion of the conversation? That's sort of a framework for discussing?
I think, I think I can answer. We will have a discussion at a, at a work session.
Okay.
And it will be our regular discussion.
Okay, well, it was Dr. Braybrand's word, so I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't, it wasn't just, I provided you the flexibility. He said framework and flexibility, so I just wanted to probe a little bit about what he meant when he used that word.
Of all, all the information I received, there was different information, different emphasis. There was not one story shared with me as superintendent. There were multiple stories, and those stories, I think, exist within the five names I've shared with you.
Okay. So one, one other question I wanted to, and I, and on, after our July meeting, subsequent to that time, are you confident that you've, you have done your level best to follow the procedures in place that we have within the school system?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And, and one of the suggestions that was made by a speaker or two was that the students have a voice and that we put maybe the matter to the students of Jeb Stuart High School. I don't believe that's part of the, of the current regulations. Would you think that would be a productive?
I think, given the amount of time the school board has wrestled with this issue, the board needs to decide whether there's the need to further reach out to students to make a decision. That's what I would tell you.
Okay. And then I guess the final thing I would, I would ask is, and maybe you've already answered this, but do you believe that there is a, a recommendation that you might come to on a path forward that would minimize further controversy and school stress and allow us to get back as quickly as possible to focusing on excellence in education at Jeb Stuart High School?
Not at this point, but I continue to think about it more than I think, I have been thinking about this more than almost anything else since I've been here. I'm coming back to the Fairfax family. We're all Fairfax family, regardless of what's decided. And how to do that is something I've been thinking a lot about. I don't have the answer tonight for you. If I did, frankly, I really would have brought it. It is truly a tough, tough, it is a tough process. I am confident, honestly, in the time I've been here with this board and the issues that we have faced already, that we're going to be able to work as a team and come together and figure out a decision that's going to be in the best interest of kids in the community.
Okay. And then finally, one last question, because you did present five out of many, many more names that were proposed. Because you've presented five, I guess, one of the things that we can talk about as a board, but you didn't include in your recommendation sort of the blank or something else that the board were to decide upon?
No, I didn't include a blank. I mean, I think the board needs to use the work session to really start to tease out for the board, what are the thoughts as they review those five names? And actually, I would encourage the board, after tonight, to go back, reflect on the names, listen to the community, and see, there may be, there may be insights that are gathered just from looking at those five names through, through the lens of, these, these potentially could be the five names. So that's the best answer I can give you on that, on that question.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I have Ms. Evans, then Ms. Keys-Gamara, and then Ms. Palchak. Ms. Evans?
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I know this has been a difficult issue for you and for all of us, and we will have a lot more conversation about this issue at our work session, and in the community, and amongst ourselves. So, I do want to assure people that tremendous education is going on at Stewart High School every day. Despite the fact that this issue has absorbed a significant amount of time at our level, Stewart is doing a great job, and the teachers and the administration there is superb.
I completely agree.
And I just think that point needs to be made. It has great challenges and attained full accreditation this year, and kudos to everyone there. Also, kudos to our staff, and thanking everyone for the time and the effort. When I went there during the voting, the long, long line of computers there with, you know, no waiting, everyone was able to go right in, and we had a lot of people there helping out. So, I appreciate it very much, all the time that people spent on two Saturdays. For now, what I do want to raise a couple of things that some of my colleagues have raised, some of them are ready. I am going to have a significant number of questions about the cost.
Okay.
And particularly, I think it's important for us to see what the typical replacement cycle is on each and every one of these items. Some of them, of course, you know, if you have a sign on the side of the building, it might last, you know, for the lifetime of the building, but quite a few things are in a replacement cycle, whether it's athletic uniforms, or whether, you know, synthetic turf fields, they're only lasting us about 10 years now. We had hoped 15, but they're lasting us 10. So, the Board needs to see when we would normally be replacing each and every one of these items anyway, how much FCPS would be putting into it, what funds would be coming from other sources, and what those sources are. So, that's, and I agree with Ms. McLaughlin. I actually, a couple of us had raised this before, the idea that we don't necessarily have to rip up the end zone. There may be alternatives, and there may be lower-cost alternatives to some of these other items as well.
Okay.
So, I will want to see those. As far as the vote, you know, it was extraordinary. I'm not sure any of us expected the 73 names to be put forward. I went back and looked at the two previous namings that I'd been involved in at Bailey's Upper. There were eight names suggested at the time, and we went through a couple of different rounds. We went through two rounds, I'm sorry, two rounds for Masoncrest. Masoncrest was the first one. And then, for Bailey's, we had eight names also, and we had four different rounds that time, and went through an elimination process. Now, as I say, there was no reason for us to know upfront that there would be quite this many.
Right.
But if we had it to do again, perhaps we could have done something like some elimination rounds to give us more clarity on some of these things, but we didn't. And so, I agree with you. We'll have to wrestle with that in conjunction with the community and with the students. I am hearing what some of the community is saying, and Ms. Vatacondo as well, going back to the students, and I think that's something for us to ponder, whether there would be a value to that. I haven't, I'll have to think that through, and I think my colleagues may have to think that through as well, whether there's more to be done there, or whether we've done what we can. But I do want to thank you, Dr. Braybrand. I think we have a lot to consider here, and before we have our work session, I'll be looking through both the cost estimates and the specific outcome as well.
We'll be ready for the work session with the questions the Board has asked this evening.
And I guess, to the last point, again, Ms. McLaughlin had raised the issue of the timeline. The motion said "by."
By.
The 2019 school year. Didn't say we couldn't do it sooner.
Okay.
So, that gave us a little bit of breathing room, but nothing to prevent us from going faster.
Okay.
Ms. Keys-Gomara, and then Ms. Palczak.
You're welcome.
Push the... Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for, I know this was hard. I wasn't here for all the fun that happened before my election, but I know that this is difficult, and I've had a lot of discussions with members in the community. And I just want to answer a couple of things that some of my colleagues have mentioned. I think there was some discussion about combining, why the names of Stewart weren't combined, and Marshall was combined, and then the word, the phrase disenfranchised was used. And I know we're going to have to have a lot of discussion about this, but if you really look at the three names, which is really amazing, out of 70-plus names, these are the three that rose to the top, other than Stewart. If you combine those, it certainly was more people now, whether that is a representative group of people. Who knows? American elections go up and down, and sometimes we don't have the participation that we'd like to have. But I do think that, I don't want, and I don't think this is lost on this group, but as the new member, I feel like I need to say, there's an important political context, as well as a historical context, that creates an urgency for me to deal with this. And I understand the caution, I understand the desire to perhaps go back and make sure we've done it correctly, but what I'm hearing is this is a two-year process. And as the newest Board member who has probably more recently been on the campaign trail, talking to folks, and hearing what they're having to say, I think that we need to make a decision as quickly as possible, so that we can be in the healing process. And I hope that that process will, and I know that it should be, hard discussions are sometimes the most meaningful. And this is a community that needs to not shy away, I think, from those discussions. I don't think anybody at this dais would do that, but I think that it is a very positive process, and I think that we should approach it as such. I think that there's been some talk about students voting. I know my first meeting, September 14th, somebody came up and said, the students voted and said whatever they said. I don't know how real that is, but perhaps we can take a look at that and find out whether that was just some students gathered in the cafeteria, or whether it's something that we can look at as really contributing to our discussion. But I would just really emphasize that this is in light of what all of our students are hearing, and I think that this is a hard time for everybody, particularly in light of Charlottesville and some of the things that we're hearing every day. And so, I think that it is time to take leadership. I think it is time to grapple with something that's difficult, and as a community, and realize that it's just something we have to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Palczak? Ms. Palczak?
Yes, thank you. No, I appreciate the work, and I appreciate, I agree with the reasoning, and I think, as Ms. McLaughlin mentioned, the fact that it has been, you know, a couple of years of taking input, going through a process, whether it's the best process or not, I think is a different step we need to also look at for any future Boards. But I do think you've given us five names that we need to discuss. Like my colleagues, I will leave that to the work session. I think it's important to mention that, I think it was not there. Stewart is now also fully accredited, and that we need to find a way to move forward. I also share similar questions about the budget and the proposals, so I'll look forward to receiving those. When it comes to the student input, you know, in hindsight, and looking at the way the process was done in some other districts, I think there are some things for us to look at and learn. I believe in Williamsburg, an elementary school was renamed, and they actually first collected the names from the students, so all of the options, there were many, many options. And then, it was a little bit backwards, and those were taken to a community vote, and three names were brought to the Board. And so, the Board knew that they weren't required to choose from those, but they did eventually choose from those three names. I believe they chose the one that came in third, that was the name of the street the school was on. So, it's a slightly different process, not entirely different, and maybe something, you know, a little separate that we need to look at. I am not told on, you know, any option. I look forward to the discussion, but I do agree with my colleagues that I think it's been a long process. We are ready to move on and look at the real work that we do here every single day. So, I hope with my colleagues that we can have conversations during the work session, before, after, and help the community come to a conclusion and move forward. But that being said, I really especially look forward to figuring out exactly the costs. And tied to that, I had a question about the, just logistics around having donations on the website. My hope, and I assume a good way to move forward would be to have the foundation in charge of that?
Yes.
Is that, oh, okay. You, sorry.
They are. On our website, but the foundation will be responsible for the distribution.
Okay. I couldn't access the document, so I missed some of what you were saying. Okay, perfect. That is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for your comments. I agree with Ms. Keys-Gomara. It's time for us to make a decision and go on. I don't want to go back and re-vote anything. It has been a vigorous and heartfelt debate among many in the community. I really don't want to go back to the students. They, I think it would just divide things again. The school Board made a decision a while back that we wanted to change the name of the school, and it's now time to make our decision. So, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Strauss.
For the planning to conduct the two meetings. I think staff did a very good job, and there were many contingencies to make sure that the technology worked, that everything was safe and orderly. I thank the citizens and the people who have participated in the two meetings. It's my understanding that we knew that there were strong feelings on all sides, but that people were civically minded and took their responsibility responsibly, and it came forward, and we now have decisions. Thank you for sending us recommending five names. That gives us, I think, enough to come to a responsible decision. So, thank you very much, and thank you, colleagues, for your input.
Thank you, Chairman Strauss.
And you can sit down now, Dr. Braybrand.
The next item is confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the Board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. The first motion we will take up is a personnel matter, and I will call on Ms. Hines for motion.
I move to authorize Division Council to settle the pending personnel matter according to the terms and conditions discussed in closed session.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McElveen. All those in favor? Evans, McLaughlin, Palczak, McElveen, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Hines, Darnett Kofex, Keys-Gomara. Those opposed? Abstention. Schultz, Wilson. Thank you. The next motion, which is M1. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to excuse from attendance at school certain students identified in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22.1254B1.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Darnett Kofex. All those in favor? Evans, Wilson, Palczak, McElveen, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Hines, Schultz, Darnett Kofex, Keys-Gomara. Opposition? Abstention. McLaughlin. We fair Roberts rules, we have to mention it all.
I do.
All right. That motion passes. Next, I will call on Mrs. Schultz for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who is charged with a serious criminal offense related to an alleged community-based incident, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the superintendent.
Seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor? It is Sanders, Wilson, Palczak, McElveen, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Moon, Hines, Schultz, Darnett Kofex, Keys-Gomara. Opposed? Abstention. Ms. McLaughlin, thank you. That passes. Next, I will call on Ms. McLaughlin for a motion.
Sorry, did not have this...
That's fine. M3.
...in front of me. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who threatened a teacher, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Schultz. Thank you all in favor. That motion is unanimous. Thank you very much. The next item, 5.02, is the Strategic Plan, Goal Four, Resource Stewartship, and I will call on Ms. Evans for the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board approve the Strategic Plan, Goal Four, Resource Stewartship report as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Ms. Darnett Kofex. Ms. Evans, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, I wanted to remind the community that we have had a presentation on this, and we have had an extensive work session on this report. It's a very thorough report. It's an excellent report, and I urge all of my colleagues to support it.
Ms. Darnett Kofex, would you like to add anything?
Just concurring with Ms. Evans' thoughts. We had a very robust work session just last week, so I thank staff for their time and effort in putting this together, and I too encourage my colleagues to support it.
Thank you. There are some lights on, but you may be leftover lights. Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, did you want to speak to it? Okay, great.
I guess, just for the public, I did share with my colleagues at the work session that, while I appreciate the hard work the staff has done, I'm concerned that we, as a Board, this is our goal reports. This is our way of demonstrating our oversight and governance of the system. I don't feel that we have come to a clear message and direction to staff about our expectations for these monitoring reports. I think it's important that we not just present data about the performance of the system and where we are, but that there's analysis, and that there is also a clear reporting of what would be the next steps coming from the information that we've gleaned over the past year. And so, as a result, I don't feel comfortable at this time voting in support of the report. It's, again, as much I believe on the part of our Board to maybe get clarity of where expectations are, but I do believe that there's improvement that's needed, and I'm hopeful that as we work together with our new superintendent, Dr. Braybrand, that these goal reports, I believe, will not just be sort of a reporting out of data points, but getting the more deeper analysis that allows us to truly move toward continuous improvement, and that we communicate as much to the Board and to the public on what we see the next steps will be, as detailed in the report. So, I just wanted my colleagues to understand my vote tonight again.
Mr. Moon?
Madam Chair, I'll be abstaining from voting on this one for a different reason. I wasn't able to participate in the work session discussion last Monday.
Mr. Moon was out of the country. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, I wanted to thank staff and Dr. Braybrand for actually responding to a lot of meaningful conversation at the Board table during our work, or during the work session last week. And one of the areas that was highlighted, and it was addressed, maybe not to the full satisfaction of everybody, but was to really look at the conclusion in the report and flesh it out a bit. And this is something where people will often hear me say that we should look at continuous process improvement, and that this is a good example of taking a look at this report and saying, in a very short timeframe, how can we make it better? How can we flesh out that conclusion? And so, I appreciate it. I appreciate Mrs. McLaughlin's comments during that session about how we can actually improve these reports over time, but this is a significant... improve these reports over time, but this is a significant improvement in just a very short time, so I will be happy to support this report.
Ms. Schultz.
I'm going to strike a balance between Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. McLaughlin in that Ms. McLaughlin's not wrong. The expectation to date has sort of been soft in terms of maybe a unified voice of this board, but there does have to be analysis in goal reports. Data for data's sake, it does not inform the board. It doesn't help us achieve better policy. I am very appreciative over past goal reports, and Walt Carlson, wherever you are, this is for you, of being more strategic for the data that's in here and giving us things like the cost of, disaggregated cost of the cost per pupil, instead of us just randomly saying against the WABE guide, it costs $14,000 to educate a student in Fairfax County. That is wholly inadequate and inaccurate, considering the different types of education that we deliver. But I think that this is the beginning of a dialogue, and I'm going to vote for this. I'm going to do it under a tentative, a hopeful outlook, Dr. Braybrand, that you continue to work with us as board to refine our expectations of staff and then push staff to deliver meaningful interpretation of the data that they're giving to us, because a slide that shows something that doesn't tell us something, that doesn't tell us something from a staff operational perspective in terms of how we functionally approach it, in terms of strategic delivery of dollars to that issue, a reinterpretation of existing policy, how the board directs you in response to data that has informed, is really the ultimate goal of how we work to get a really good system to be great, not as an overall overarching definition, but great at the school level. And there is information here that will substantially get us on our way, and so I put my hand up, but I put my hand up with the acknowledgement that it's, you know, beginning a journey that I think is getting better with this report.
Thank you. I will call for the vote to the board to approve the Strategic Plan Goal Four Resource Stewardship report. All those in favor? It is Evans, Wilson, Polczek, McElveen, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Hines, Schultz, Derinat Kofex, Kies-Gamera. Oppose? Abstention? Mr. Moon? Ms. McLaughlin? Thank you. The next item, Suicide Prevention Risk Assessment Postvention Policy. I will call on Ms. McLaughlin for motion.
Sorry, I was sidebar-ing with Mr. Wilson. It seems to be my night. Okay, I would like to move that the school board adopt the Suicide Prevention Risk Assessment Postvention Policy as detailed in the agenda item.
A second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McElveen. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, I very much appreciate, again, the work that staff did in preparing this very important policy. For several years now, Fairfax County Schools has been working extremely hard to identify and execute some of the very best evidence-based research and practices when it comes to suicide prevention and also postvention efforts to help our students and families and staff in our buildings. And the purpose of this policy is that we didn't have anything specifically in place that captured all the great work that Fairfax County is doing. And so not only do we have this policy, but staff then also developed a very detailed regulation that further describes all of the important work that Fairfax County is doing to make strides in an area that is so important to our students. As many people who are aware about youth suicide, it is one of the leading causes of death for teens. And it's not just those that we lose to suicide, but even those who, every day, every year, consider it and attempt it. And this policy speaks to this school system's commitment. I, again, want to also emphasize that because we are the 10th largest school system in the country, we have other school districts around the country and even around the world that I am personally aware of have reached out to our school system wanting to learn and understand what Fairfax County is doing. We have staff that go to national conferences, and so this policy will also enable school districts to look to what we're doing. And so I believe this policy is very important to the work that we're doing. So again, Dr. Braybrand, a lot of this work, I know, happened before your arrival, but to Ms. Johnson, our Assistant Superintendent, please convey my appreciation as well. To Dr. Panarelli and all of the staff who really worked hard behind the scenes to create something this meaningful, and now this will be about our action and our efforts. And finally, I do want to share with my colleagues that I met with the Chair of the Psychology Department at George Mason, who happens to be a Fairfax County father and a Braddock District resident, and I was very excited to learn from him that their department, their university, have some of the leading experts on teen suicide prevention. They continue to do really great work with Fairfax County Schools, and just another reason for why I'm very proud of our system and what we try to do. So with that, I look forward to seeing my colleagues support this important policy tonight.
Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak to your second?
Nothing further.
Okay, I see some lights. If people do not intend to speak, please turn your light off. Okay, I see Ms. Evans, Ms. Schultz, and Ms. Fatakanda. Correct? Ms. Schultz, do you intend to keep your light on? You do, thank you. All right, then, Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be brief, but I just wanted to point out that, again, we had a very detailed discussion on this policy at our work session and got a great deal of information, which was very, very helpful to our thinking. And mental wellness is something that our students bring up time and time again as an issue that's important to them. The Student Advisory Committee has worked for a couple of years. They've pooled their resources and have done an excellent job of moving us forward, and I believe are continuing down that path again this year. So nationally, suicide ideation is at a remarkable level, and it is something that we need to deal with directly, deal with it head-on. So I just want to thank the staff and the Governance Committee for all the work that you did on this policy. It's an important policy toward wellness, and I just wanted to point out, because we probably aren't going to have a long discussion tonight, this is a very, very important policy that we're passing tonight, that we did put a lot of thought into before coming here tonight.
Ms. Schultz.
Yeah, I want to recognize the parents, moms, who are sitting out here tonight, who ended up bringing up something that I discussed with Dr. Lockard back in the spring about suicide statistics and the northeast region of the country from 1999 to 2014, which is when the statistics that were available, suicide for, let's see, what was it? People, young people between the ages of five and 24, and it's not really, that's their category, it's not really the five-year-olds who are committing suicide, is up 346%. And so one of the things that I've been committed to for about four and a half years is the serious engagement of the school system with teachers, families, and students on digital citizenship. And if you think about who was graduating from high school or who was 24 years old back in 1999 versus now, the thing that is different is this. And the prevalence of this in the lives of young people is directly proportional. The more prevalent this has been over time, the more prevalent suicide is. And this is a supercomputer. It's not a telephone. And we're from a generation where this is perceived as a communication device, except we're putting into the hands of 11-year-olds the exact same device that is in the hands of terrorists, that's in the hands of CEOs, that's in the hands of people who do, you know, commercial jumbo jet, you know, work across the planet. And so a 55-year-old, multimillion-dollar-earning athlete has the same device as an 11-year-old, and I think it's a problem. And so the more that we can talk about the pressures that are created beyond just homework and the need to, you know, have a Fairfax student achieve and get into college and the pressures that come with living in the chaos of Northern Virginia, I think we give students permission to go back to being students and not expecting them to frankly handle and navigate things that are much beyond their capabilities that adults around them aren't even necessarily handling well. And so I beseech parents, take your cellphones away from your kids at night, have them plug them in on the main level, have real conversations instead of everybody, you know, faces and devices, and reconnect. I appreciate this policy, but again, just like my previous comment, I think it's the beginning of something that has to really engage communities, whether it's recess, whether it's engagement, whether it's extracurricular activities and after-school buses, whatever is needed. But I think we need, we have some brave conversations ahead on our forefront as a board, as parents, and as stakeholders in the 10th largest school system in the country.
Ms. Fatakanda.
Thank you. I'm going to be brief, but as Ms. Evans said, this policy is super important, but beyond that, I want to remind everyone that it's the implementation of this that will make it successful or not, and I want to remind everyone that at the high school level, we should be utilizing the organizations that high schoolers have developed to achieve some of these goals. Like with the issue of bringing students who are in crisis to their counselors or their school psychologists, we shouldn't rely on kids feeling comfortable enough to talk to their counselor, because unfortunately, in a lot of our schools, there is a stigma that, oh, I don't want to tell my counselor about this. We need to work with a lot of our high school students who are youth counselors or are trained in youth mental health first aid, so that they can bring their peers to the office and get them the help we need. And for the provisions of grief counseling and support groups, we should make those student-led groups, so that counselors can support the work that students are doing, but it doesn't feel artificial and students don't feel like, oh, this is being forced on us. It feels like, oh, we're doing this as a community. This is our initiative. Yes. And also, this is, as Ms. Schultz said, it's the beginning, and I think that a lot of the work we need to do isn't just going to be related to suicide, it's going to also be related to anxiety and stress that are only the beginnings of suicidal tendencies. Thank you.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank former Governance Committee Chair for working so hard to develop this policy, working with other Governance Committee members. On the cellphone business search, I fully agree with you. This is a source of my own stress, that earlier today, by accident, I left this behind in my car, so peaceful I found, I was even able to avoid some phone calls from fellow board members.[1454.66][1454.66](Laughter) So I encourage my board members to leave this behind in your car as much as you can. And having said that, this, having said that this is mental health and stress, that's not just here, that's everywhere. I, you know, recently came back from a trip from Korea, and one of the superintendents I met with had in-depth discussion, they are struggling with the stress and mental health problems that their students from high-stakes testing, their desire, drive for highest academic achievement in their country. So I fully support this. We have a lot of work ahead of us.
Ms. Karen Kies-Gamar. No, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you, and thank you to my colleagues for all of your comments tonight, because it really leads us into a discussion about not only this policy, but that this policy is but one policy or one tool in our toolbox for our students and our staff actually dealing with stress. And that toolbox includes everything from the Cognito project, or the Cognito tool that many of our students and staff have been trained on, the excellent resources available through our counseling centers at each of our schools, as well as the advocacy and support for programs like additional recess and actually moving about and getting people up and moving not only during the school day, but once they leave school. And so I would encourage people to look at this policy as but one piece of a broader dialogue and discussion about how we encourage people to live healthy, balanced lives and that we ourselves model it. Thank you, Mr. Moon, for encouraging us to do that, but that we also teach our children that their identity is not tied up into their cellphone or their Facebook or Twitter feeds, but that their identity is really something that they get to develop themselves through the real and meaningful relationships they develop, and hopefully, each one of our children have real and meaningful relationships with adults every day in our schools. And so I will be supporting this policy.
I want to thank all those who worked on the policy, our staff. I know there's a lot of work that is done between school staff and county staff in order to meet the mental health needs of our students, and as everyone has said, work-life balance, chill. We need to do that. So thank you to everybody. I will call on the vote to adopt the Suicide Prevention Risk Assessment Postvention Policy as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor? That motion is unanimous. Thank you very much.[1652.04][1652.04](Applause) More recess. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Roberts rules, provide for consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation, have been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. Seeing no request.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I know this comes a little too late, but I do would like to make an appointment to AAPAC so that my appointee could attend the upcoming meeting.
Yes.
So if I could ask you to add Ravi Minani, R-A-V-I-M-Y-N-E-N-I. I provide a name to her, Madam Clerk, as my appoint to AAPAC. I would really appreciate it.
Yes, we will include that, and I understand staff has the needed information, so that will be a part of this motion. Okay, the consent agenda. 6.01, approve the minutes of the September 14 regular meeting. 6.02, adopt individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. 6.03, adopt the newly revised 2017 Fairfax County Purchasing Resolution, previously adopted by the Board of Supervisors, subject to the conditions detailed in the agenda item. 6.04, award the contract for the rooftop air handling unit replacements at Chantilly High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Service Mechanical, Inc., in the amount of $269,594, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.05, award the contract for the automatic temperature control system replacement at Flint Hill Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Engineered Services, Inc., in the amount... 6.05, award the contract for the automatic temperature control system replacement at Flint Hill Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Engineered Services, Inc., in the amount of $385,000, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.06, award a contract for the portable classroom trailer purchase to Vanguard Modular Building Systems LLC as the most responsive and responsible offer, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.07, confirm the separations for the period beginning July 1, 2017, and ending July 31, 2017, and for the period beginning August 1, 2017, and ending August 31, 2017. 6.208, appoint individuals to serve a one-year term on the Challenge Materials Interdepartmental Review Committee as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. New business, the following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01, award a contract for Robinson Secondary School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.02, superintendent's recommendation for Jeb Stuart renaming. 7.03, approve the division-wide comprehensive plan as detailed in the agenda item. 7.04, confirm the appointment of a citizen member to the audit committee. Next is superintendent matters. Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Strauss. You know, it's been difficult, actually, board members mentioned it tonight, all the natural disasters that we've had in the news recently, but I want you to know Fairfax County students are stepping up. We've had students at Hayfield Secondary, Hayfield Elementary, Madison High School, participating in multi-school efforts to ship school supplies and unused social studies textbooks in need to Texas as a result of damage from Hurricane Harvey. This was spearheaded by Hayfield Secondary Social Studies teacher Wendy Filene. She formerly lived and taught in the region affected by the hurricane, and with the support of her principal, Marlon Grimm, the drive grew from supplies to textbooks. Ms. Filene is moderator of an online professional learning community of 1,800 AP US history teachers from around the country, and they responded to the plea to provide supplies to the Rockport, Texas area. Teachers and students packed 500 books to send to Texas. With donations from the three school communities, more than five pallets of supplies and textbooks were collected and packed to ship to South Texas. I'm sure we'll be seeing additional outreaches by additional schools as we deal with all of the stuff going on in Florida and in Puerto Rico right now, and of course, our thoughts and prayers are with all of those communities and especially those young people who are facing disruption of school as part of their reality right now. I made a mention of this before, I really am enjoying my Friday school visits. Since the start of the year, I have visited 20 schools, several on the books for tomorrow, starting tomorrow morning. It's so great to get out to schools and see everything that's going on, and I want to thank everyone for the warm welcome. And as I started the year, you all were at my leadership conference, or our leadership conference together, and I talked about excellence, equity, and effectiveness, three E's, words that start with E. But the word that's been coming to my mind more lately actually starts with the letter J, and that's joy. And listening even tonight, I stepped away, this is what I love about Fairfax County, you can even step away and for the community, you can go back, and there's actually a TV in the back, and you can still hear even if you walk away from the dais. We need to rediscover the joy that it is to be a student in Fairfax County Public Schools, to be a teacher in Fairfax County Public Schools, to be a principal, or central office worker, or a bus driver, custodian, or to be a superintendent in Fairfax County Schools. I have returned joyful, and I'm becoming more joyful by the day at what this school district is doing for students and the community, and I am sure we are going to have an even more amazing year as our calendar unfolds. So thank you for everything you all are doing to support me, and I will see you out and about tomorrow and in the days and weeks ahead. So thank you.
Call on Ms. McLaughlin for an update on the skip committee.
Yes, thank you. This year, I am serving with Supervisor Jeff McKay as the co-chairs of the Successful Children Youth Policy Team, the executive committee of which both Ms. Darnett Kofax and I represent, the board, met to discuss what would be on the agenda for the October full skip committee discussion. And during the September 6 meeting, we did get a staff review on the issues of Fairfax County's, one Fairfax policy that the individual school board members and board supervisors met with staff, some in joint meetings, to review the draft language of that policy. The next step will be to take that input, refine the policy, and bring it to the individual boards for work session discussion, so that will be on the horizon. In addition, we are, we got a presentation, and it will be coming to the full skip, on our school readiness plan. When we got the information on the school readiness plan, the focus is equitable delivery of school readiness for all students. They provided us with their definitions for vision, mission, and readiness goals. They'll be still working on the execution of the actual implementation of the plan, so that will be for further discussion for the skip, and that's been one of the key issues that skip has really wanted to really improve upon, early childhood education. We also will be getting an update on our community schools. For those of you who maybe over the years, you've heard the individual conversations about how do we have community schools that help deliver not just education, but wraparound services, social services, health services, and all the other things that help a child and their families to be successful. And so, we'll be getting an update on that. I serve on that subcommittee, and I'm very excited about the intentional work that's being done, again, at a joint county level. And then, we are also surveying all of the different stakeholder organizations throughout the county nonprofits to get an idea about the services that they're providing, so again, there's a better understanding of all the things that Fairfax County does in partnership with our nonprofits, and that's called the moving train, and they want to map out what we're doing, so that survey's also going to happen. So again, Ms. Kofax and I will be at the October 6 skip committee meeting, and we will bring you an update then. And before I conclude, Ms. Kofax, is there anything else you wanted to add in my summary? No? Okay. Thank you.
Board matters, we'll begin with Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I will say that I've enjoyed meeting with many of the principals at Mason District Schools over the last several weeks, and have enjoyed seeing all the great work that's going on in the schools at the beginning of the school year. If I haven't gotten to you yet, I'm on my way. I want to thank the advocates for coming out today and sticking with us to the bitter end here to advocate for recess. I certainly support recess for young kids and having them move around, because I agree with you that they, their brains need movement. So, I am the liaison this year to the School Health Advisory Committee, and I believe this is an issue that's going to be coming up again then, so thank you for joining us.
Before we go to Mr. Wilson, I forgot to call on Ms. Corbett Sanders to report on the forum, and then I'll come back to Mr. Wilson, sorry.
Yes, we actually had two topics come to forum this evening and had robust discussions about both of them. The first topic was associated with the structure and discipline surrounding our forum and making sure that we make the forum a meaningful use of time for the whole board, and it was decided to send the issue of forum and how we can improve its effectiveness and ensure its timely response to policy matters to the Governance Committee. The second topic is one that nicely follows after Mrs. Evans's board matters, because it's about wellness, and that we will be organizing a time on a work session during November to have Dr. Judy Owens and Dr. Danny Lewin, our National Children's Medical Center consultants on later high school start times, to come and present their findings, which will be the subject of two articles being published during the month of December.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Wilson, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also would like to thank the recess advocates that came out tonight. I found the two presenters were excellent, and your signage was great, too. And as we approach the end of the sixth hour of meetings at a school bar tonight, I think maybe I would advocate for a recess for us.[1251.08][1251.08](Laughter) If we have meetings that extend beyond four hours continuously, but I guess we'll deal with maybe recess in schools first. I'm going to, otherwise, I'm going to pass, although I do plan to get out there and have some office hours, and I've met with some high school principals already and hope to meet with many more in the coming weeks, and thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
First, I too want to thank the recess advocates. I'm very fortunate that many of them reside in the Braddock District, and first brought this issue to me back in the last school year, and in fact, so impressed with not only your advocacy, but your efforts in surveying and bringing those results, being able to connect you with Dr. Liz Payne, who is our health and PE expert within the school system. You've really taken a very important issue, certainly as you documented tonight, over 7,000 responses means it resonates deeply. And as I have shared through my office hours and in my meetings with the advocates, this is something that over 15 years ago, when I was a PTA president, I had meetings with principal, with my principal, to try and explain why my third-grade son and his classmates should not have recess taken away as punishment, because some of the children were having behavior issues. It's not healthy for any child, and even those who are having behavior issues, the need to get out will hopefully reduce that. So, I do very much want to thank you as both a parent and as someone who represents you in the district. Please continue this valuable work you're doing, you're going to make a difference in the lives of all the children in the 10th-largest school system in the U.S. I also want to give a huge shout-out of congratulations to our Woodson High School new principal, Dr. Carlin Floyd. She was actually here this evening with our boys' lacrosse team. For most of my colleagues, you may not be aware, she had been our Director of Student Services at Woodson for the past few years, and before that was Principal Quanda Road. She is a phenomenal leader in our school system and cares deeply about the whole child. And I have been very fortunate as a Woodson parent to experience firsthand her deep dedication to our students and to our staff, her tremendous advocacy for work-life balance, and really trying to find ways that we collaborate and partner with our families for successful children. So, it's very exciting for the Woodson community, and want to welcome Dr. Floyd, and look forward to working with her in the coming years ahead. I also wanted to share that my son, who's a senior, is the chairperson of the representatives from Woodson who go to the Superintendent's Advisory Council. Students from around the county represent all of our 25 high schools. So he was there with Dr. Braybrand and all of the student representatives this past week, and he did report at our dinner table how much he enjoyed the visit from Dr. Braybrand, that not only was your passion and enthusiasm to engage with the students very evident, he was excited when you gave him a high five for one of the things he contributed. So, it's really great to hear from the students and our representative to the school board, Neha Rica. My son Ryan also said that it was evident how much you love the work you're doing and really appreciates how much you're helping to lead the dialogue with the SAC. So, it's been a good start to the school year from what I'm hearing from my families. I know for a lot of students, it's now rolling into midterms, sort of midway through the first quarter already, so, and especially to our seniors, the November 1 college application deadline is looming, and so, to all of our seniors out there, please keep your heads up, stay strong, know that you've got the support of your teachers and the community behind you, and hopefully, you will realize that this journey of the college application process, in the end, will be a positive one.
Ms. Walczak?
Yes, thank you. I also briefly want to thank the moms for being here. I met my best friend at recess, my first year in the U.S., so very much appreciate it. Also, having space, very much miss the fact that we had wonderful Wood City that caused splinters, but I know that I, Man Tua and other schools are now finding ways to make sure that there's nature and native plants for our kids to be able to enjoy when they're outside, so thank you for being here. It also brings joy, so Dr. Braybrand, I'm sure you're a big proponent of that as well. I've really enjoyed being back in the classroom, and I know my kids really enjoy their time as much as, I know they love being with me most of the day, right? Anyway, I want to thank Principal Novak, I ran into him at the Kingsley Community Health Fair this past weekend, and it's just great to see that he and his staff are out in the community, making sure that they're meeting parents and getting to know members and knowing that they are there to support families. So I appreciate all of the extra time and effort that our principals, who are doing excellent work, do in the community. Finally, I want to thank Ms. Corbett Sanders and staff for sharing with me that the Fairfax County Cable Network is presenting Spanish-language versions of classic movies, which I will show my students, in celebration of Black History Month, and, not Hispanic History Month, I assume.
Yes.
And encourages reading of literary classics, everything from El Libro de la Selva, The Jungle Book, to one of my favorites, A Little Princess. So, you can tune in to Channel 36 from now until October 15, and you can also find more information on FAC.org, and they hope that this will help pique young people's interest in motivating them to read some of these original classics. So, I hope you will take the opportunity to watch some of these films, and I wish everyone a restful and joyful weekend. Thank you.
Mr. McElveen? Pass. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes. First, I would like to make people aware that October is Disability Employment Awareness Month in Fairfax County, and so, please be aware of the opportunities and the challenges posed by that, as well as its Head Start Awareness Month in October. I want to thank all of the principals, teachers, and staff that have met with me throughout the Magisterial District. I've been going to all of our local schools, and I want to especially thank Mrs. Kees-Gamarra for joining me at some of those meetings. It's been a great opportunity to get back into the schools as we started the school year, and especially seeing our problem-based learning being done in a number of schools with a focus on science. Would also like to thank Mark Greenfelder for the excellent work and briefing that he provided on Project Momentum. For those of you that have not had the opportunity to meet with Mark, please go ahead and do it, it was wonderful to see the strategies that we are using to turn around schools. And I would like to invite all of my fellow Groveton alumni. I know you may not know about Groveton, because it is the only school in Fairfax County that has ever had its name changed, but I am an alumni, and we are having an all-class reunion for Groveton High School, October 8, from 12 to 5 at Fort Hunt Park. And I wish everybody a happy and healthy fast for Yom Kippur as well.
Mr. Moon?
Just briefly, Madam Chair, I mentioned about my trip to Korea a little bit ago. Another superintendent that I met from my trip was known other than the superintendent of the capital city Seoul. Seoul has 10 million residents, a lot of students, and thousands of schools, and this gentleman... And this gentleman, Dr. Cho Superintendent, is very much interested in equity issues. And so we got into this, we just ran out of time. He wanted to meet me again, but we just could not find the time to meet again. But he sent me a PDF file of a 45-page document. So I am going to read that. The title of that article is very interesting. Education Inequality and (quote and unquote) Equitable Difference. Equitable Difference. I want to know what they mean, what he meant by equitable difference. And that is Seoul Metropolitan Office of Education's Educational Equitable Policy. So as we develop our own equity policy, I'm hoping that I will learn something from reading this, and I promise to, promise to report something back to you after reading this.
Ms. Schultz.
Yes, I want to share that I'm going to be having community office hours on Saturday morning at the Burke Library from 10 to 11. For those who are familiar with coming to my citizen town halls and previous office hours, this one is intended, because it's at the very beginning of the year, it's just intended for one-on-ones for anyone who has a concern or something they'd like to share with me, just quick sessions. I'm also having a second set of office hours on Wednesday, October 3, from 10 to 11:30 at the same place, at Burke Library. This is just the first of my office hours, and town halls will follow later in the fall after we have some more time under our belt. But I just wanted to give parents the opportunity to reach out to me. I know these are both in the morning, but it's a little tough scheduling, the library and availability, and we wanted to make sure that those were out there. I do thank the advocates. If you take a look at this board, Ms. Evans, you know, began championing sleep, Ms. McLaughlin began championing grading. Ms. McLaughlin and I have broken in bloody heads over dragging the system on discipline reform, you know, did a lot of work on dyslexia. So it takes time and patience, but you will definitely get there. I do appreciate the time this morning with Mr. Eline, Principal Eline, as the head of the High School Principals Association, spending time reaching out, we're really trying to be more deliberative in working with. And I have a proposal that I'll be sharing individually with each of my colleagues on some great outreach that the high school principals would like to do with us and continue to build and establish relationships that are necessary to promote a healthy system. Thank you.
Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Yes, I have been enjoying the back-to-school nights. I think I've got my last two under my belt this week. So thank you to all the parents who have come out. It's extremely important that you play an active role in your children's education, and by being at the back-to-school night, that's your first step. So thank you for doing that. I also look forward to meeting PTA officers this weekend at the County Council of PTA for Dr. Braybrand. They're having reception here at Gate House. So I look forward to seeing people there. And thank you, and have a good, as Ms. Corbett Sanders, it is Yom Kippur. So to all those who are atoning and celebrate, and recently celebrated the New Year, I wish you well.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Am I the last person?
You are.
Oh, okay. Well, I just want to, oh, besides you. Oh, okay. Well, I just want to thank everybody for my first full meeting, and I think the most important thing I can say at this time is good night.[1734.41][1734.41](LAUGHTER).
Thank you. Just, I want to thank Herndon High School. They sponsored their Showcase of Bands competition last week. It was wonderful. They did a great job. And for those who are in the McLean area, we have our big McLean Project for the Arts Art Fest in the Central Park on Sunday. It is a big, big event in McLean, so if you're interested in art, and a lot of our students will also be displaying their artwork, it's lots of fun. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.